Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, June the 11th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. City Attorney, would you please lead us into invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Our heavenly Father, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, as well as the rights and needs of both the individual and our community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations tonight. This we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Brooks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Here.
Commissioner McGinn?
Here.
All present.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Next on the agenda is Proclamations. This evening, we're going to issue a proclamation in honor of the USFSP YMCA Civic Fellows Program. And I will read it. Whereas USF St. Petersburg and the Florida YMCA youth in government have partnered to establish the Civic Fellows Program, and whereas this collaboration between a university and a statewide youth in government initiative is the first of its kind nationwide, and whereas this inaugural summer civics institute includes students and YMCA chapters from throughout the state of Florida, and whereas the participants are civilly engaged students representing the next generation of public servants and community leaders, and whereas it is a priority of local and state government alike to strengthen and support civic education programming for youth in Florida, and whereas these students are contributing to the civic health and well-being of our community, and we are proud to welcome them to Madeira Beach, and whereas the lead instructor of the Civic Fellows Program, USFSP political science professor Judith Ann Scowrefield McLachlan, is a longtime resident of Madeira Beach. Now therefore, I, Anne Marie Brooks, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, do hereby recognize June the 11th, 2025, as USFSP YMCA Youth in Government Civic Fellows Day.
Ms. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to basically recognize this wonderful group that has been here today. They've been out there, I guess, all day, from town to town. They've been inspired and inspiring. I also wanted to thank our city manager for being so wonderful in describing the city and the position that he has, and also the commission. I think it was extremely informative. And most of all, I was watching everybody here as the city manager was talking, and everybody was attentive. I just want to let you know for 50 minutes plus, everybody was attentive, and they were all listening. So just wanted to say thank you. It's commendable. There's a great future ahead of you. Just be involved with public. Get involved. Thank you for what you're doing.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is Presentations. With no Presentations, we will move right into Public Comment. Public participation is encouraged. If you are addressing the commission, step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and the organization or group you represent. Please limit your comments to five minutes and do not include any topic on the agenda. Public comment on agenda items will be allowed when they come up. If you would like someone at the city to follow up on a comment or question made at the meeting, you may fill out a comment card with the contact information and give it to the city manager. Comment cards are available at the back table in the commission chambers. Completing a comment card is not mandatory. For any quasi-judicial public hearings that might be on the agenda, an affected person may be a party to a quasi-judicial proceeding, and can be entitled to present evidence at the hearing, including the sworn testimony of witnesses, and relevant exhibits, and other documentary evidence, and to cross-examine all witnesses by filing a notice of intent to be a party with the Community Development Director not less than five days prior to the hearing. Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. If the commission has had the opportunity to review the minutes, do we have any suggested changes? Or a motion?
I've reviewed the minutes, and I don't see any changes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do we have a second? City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini? Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and I know that we received an email from the city attorney today to pull Item C for discussion. So if there... Do we have any other objections to the consent agenda?
No objections.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Items A and B on the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Herr Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Attorney Trask, I'd like to hand over Item C to you, please.
Thank you. So Item 9C on your agenda is RFI number 2509, Engineering Consultant Design Services Contract Approval. As you know, this RFI was released pursuant to the Competitive Consultants Negotiation Act. Part of the requirements of the CCNA is to approve based upon a preference or a numbering system. The Public Works Director, Megan, has provided to you that RFI 2509 preference list should be on the dais in front of you. So when you approve this agenda item, it would be twofold. One would be to approve the preference list, as shown on that document that's on the dais, as well as the draft agreements that are in your packet. And you'll look, when you look at this preference list, I just want to explain it. So for example, under General Engineering Services, you have 1 through 7, Construction Design Services, 1 through 7, and so on. What happens with regard to each one of these different category of services is that when a project comes up for consideration, they will go first to number one on the preference list, attempt to negotiate a contract with that particular company. If the city's unsuccessful in doing that, it will drop down to number two, and so on as we go through the process. These contracts that are in the packet are merely in the form of a continuing contract, which would allow you to do that. Each and every time when something is, needs to be addressed within one of these several categories, it will come back to you. You're not approving any particular project. You're not approving or spending any money with regard to this vote. You're just listing them in the order of priority that we will talk to them and try to negotiate first. And we will have the contracts on hand to be able to do that in a scope-of-services-type situation. So I'm asking that the motion to approve this agenda item would be to approve the preference list, followed with approval of the contracts that are in the agenda package. That's it. That can be done in one motion.
I have a question. The preference list, let's just use General Engineering Services. If this service was needed multiple times, would number one always be the first choice? Or do they rotate down to number seven?
Number one will always be the first choice, and it may be that that engineering firm will come back and say, "I don't have the capability of handling this next project. You can move on to number two," and so on. But we will always go to number one when we start the process of negotiation. And the reason being is, they are the most qualified based upon the evaluation that your evaluation team did.
Very good. Thank you.
Attorney Trask, since we pulled this from the agenda, I need to open to public comment?
I would definitely open it to public comment.
Do we have any public comment? No public comment. Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions?
No comment.
No comment.
Then do we have a motion?
I move, hopefully I get this right, the approval for the contract for Kim Lee-Horn and Tara May Consulting, as well as the preference list.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Okay, let me just jump in. There is more than one contract in your packet. There's a number of contracts in your packet. So I would ask the motion to be, I move to approve the RFI 2509 preference list and the draft agreements that are in the agenda package. So you won't have to name them all, because there's a list of them.
I so move.
Okay. Thank you. That works.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Public Hearings, Ordinance 2025-13, Fees and Collection Procedural Manual. I will hand this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading of Ordinance 2025-13. I'll read it by title only. Ordinance 2025-13, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida Adopting a Revised Appendix A, Fees and Collection Procedures Manual of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, to Provide for the Changes to the Rates of Overnight Parking and City Development Fees and Reward Certain Development Services, Repealing Ordinance 2025-12, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Codification and Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date. That was the second final reading of Ordinance 2025-13 by title only. You'll note in the attached exhibit, it shows the changes that were made in a strikeout underlined format.
Do we have any public comment? Commission, any questions or comments?
No, I don't think so.
Questions, comments?
No comment.
I do not have any either. I think we covered all of this in our first reading. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve Ordinance 2025-13.
Do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Next on the agenda is the ABP 2025-03, and I will hand this over to the city attorney.
Thank you. This is an alcoholic beverage permit application, 2025-03, for Bel Air Market John's Pass. As you know, this is a quasi-proceeding. It's governed by the city code. Just want to go over the process as we've done in the past. There are certain things I need to notify you of, and then we'll move forward with the hearing itself. So the applicant is George Scott for Bel Air Market John's Pass LLC. The address where it will be located is 111 Boardwalk Place West, Suite 103, here in Madeira Beach. A summary of the application is that the applicant is seeking a two COP alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer and wine by the drink, or in sealed containers for consumption on premises, and by sealed container for consumption off premises at Bel Air Market John's Pass, located at 111 Boardwalk Place West, Suite 103, Madeira Beach. This establishment is in the C1 John's Pass Village Activity Center, zoning district, and the commercial core character district. The future land use designation for the property is Activity Center. The standards to be applied are the standards set forth in Section 110-532. I want to go ahead and read those quickly. When considering the alcoholic beverage application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. There are five of them. Number one, the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. And number five, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant is paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The burden of proof pursuant to Section 2-10 of the city's code is as follows. The applicant shall have the burden of proof at the hearing to show by the greater weight of the evidence that the application is consistent with the city comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of law. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant, the city, or any party, or may be imposed by the board, which are intended to assure consistency and compliance. The identity of the parties here are the city and George Scott. There are no notices of intent for affected parties that were received by the city, and therefore, there's just these two parties. The order of presentation pursuant to the city's code is, is the applicant will go first, followed by the city. I'm going to go ahead and read the quasi-judicial proceedings for you. This is a quasi-proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At this hearing, it's not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In this quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Before we get started, I need to find out whether there have been any ex parte communications with any of the commissioners, and if so, I'd like you to state what those ex parte communications were and who they are with, if any, and the general idea of what was discussed. So on this particular case, I'm just going to go down the line here. Commissioner Taglerini?
No.
Vice... Okay, sir. Vice Mayor Kerr?
No.
Mayor?
No.
Commissioner McGinn?
No.
Commissioner Gavalli? Okay. All right. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be noted today?
No.
No? Okay. Or at this time, I need to swear any witnesses that are going to be speaking about this agenda item. So for this particular alcoholic beverage license application for Bel Air Market John's Pass LLC, anyone that's going to speak, if you can stand up, raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you under oath. Anyone that's going to speak for the applicant? You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. All right. So now, the applicant should step forward and make whatever presentation the applicant would like to make in requesting approval of this application. If you could state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Melanie Leon. I'm going to be the general manager of the Bel Air Market on John's Pass. So we do plan to have a little bit more of a convenience store type. So it'd be, you know, singles, cans, packs, and then we plan to do wine slushies using organic red wine. Everything will be sealed properly. We plan to do open carryout, I believe is how you would say that for that. Yeah. Any questions?
Did you want to go through the criteria that was in the agenda package that you had filed? Or the property owner or the applicant had filed?
I was going to say, yeah. Chris Scott is the one who filed it. He's the owner of it. I can, if you need, or any questions of it.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission?
I believe you have a box checked here as far as restaurant as well. There is no restaurant?
So we are, yes. So we do do Cuban sandwiches. We don't cook anything on site. It's simply just pressing. So I guess technically would be counted as restaurant, or like a sandwich cafe, I believe you put down there. So the only thing we do is just slice and then press meats.
Do you have a sit-down?
We have two small tables inside and just a bench outside, with just two chairs, so.
Okay, thank you.
No comment.
No comment. No questions?
No questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now would be the opportunity, it's time for city staff, Mr. Morris, to make his presentation on this application.
When considering the alcoholic beverage license application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. The extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. John's Pass Village is mostly commercial uses with a focus on tourism. There are not any single-family residential areas adjacent to the property of the proposed alcohol use. A small market serving sandwiches and selling beer and wine would be a compatible use for the location. Proposed alcohol use would not adversely affect the character of this existing neighborhood. The next criteria to look at, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. The location of the Bel Air Market John's Pass has previously had commercial tenants, including a convenience store with a two-way PS alcoholic beverage license. It is not foreseen that any additional traffic would be generated since this location has previously had similar commercial tenants. There is a parking located under and behind the structure and across the street in the John's Pass Plaza parking garage. John's Pass Village is a walkable commercial area where customers can walk between their shopping and eating destinations. The proposed alcohol use would not create additional congestion or present a safety hazard. Whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed, a small market would be a compatible use in this location since it is a commercial use and would be surrounded by other commercial uses. Many of the nearby tenants have several types of alcohol licenses. The structure that this establishment is in has previously had other commercial tenants, including a convenience store. Proposed use is compatible with the location. Whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety, public safety should not be adversely affected by Bel Air Markets serving beer and wine for consumption on premises. The cafe is more than 300 feet away from any established church, synagogue, temple, or place of religious worship. Public or private school operated for the instruction of minors or youth recreation communities there. There are businesses nearby that already sell alcohol. And then, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The applicant has no outstanding fines or penalties owed to the city under any section of the code. And under recommendations, city staff recommends approval of ABP 2025-03. Attached is their Madeira Beach local application, and their existing site plan, and the public notice mailing and posting.
Okay, Mr. Morris, you're asking that the mayor receive into evidence the agenda package? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Morris by the commission?
I have a question. So the previous business also had carryout. Did it have a restaurant? Did it have any sit-down, open beverage in the previous?
It's a pretty tight spot. I've been in where one of the previous tenants had like ice cream and boba tea. I think that was one of the more recent ones that got damaged during Hurricane Helene, and they didn't renew their lease after. It's a pretty small commercial unit. So as shown, there's really not, outside those two tables, there's really not much room for, and it's going to be mostly focused on that.
Okay. So I'm going to assume by your answer, not to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. It was mentioned that you could have a open beer and take it out and serve it that way. Does that go against any city codes? I know during events, there's, you can carry alcoholic beverages throughout the John's Pass Village area, but on a, any given day, I don't know that that's the... I think that was up for a vote sometime a couple of years ago, and I believe that was voted down, an open carry. Is that correct, or do you know?
In the license, the way it has been advertised, for off-prem, like it would need to be a sealed container, because John's Pass is not a wet zone on our public right of way.
Okay. Then I would, it gets a little dicey in my mind if you're going to have a couple of tables where they can sit down and enjoy a cold alcoholic beverage, just like any place in the village. I know it happens, but we're talking about, you know, those companies or those shops, they're subject to whatever, however the city enforces that. I would just make sure that, you know, I don't see any problem with it, since it was established there prior. This is a, this is a commercial area where nearly every place down there serves alcohol. So now this is a packaged store, I'll just bring that up. If it's to be approved as a packaged store, or if they do serve in, they should consume that alcoholic beverages before leaving, just like if you're in a restaurant. That's just my input.
I think she stated that the alcohol that would leave would be covered. So I can see that if I went there, if I was up on the boardwalk, and I went in, and I got a pressed Cuban and a beer, and I sat down at a table and ate it there, I'd open my beer and drink it. But if I was going to take my Cuban and leave, I'd take my beer unopened and leave. Right? So I...
I would approve that. That would go underneath of the approval.
And that's how I would take the presentation.
Okay.
So I would agree with you.
I'd be fine with that.
Any questions for Mr. Morris from the commission? Any questions for Mr. Morris from the commission? Not seeing any. Okay, now is the time for anybody in the public that wants to speak on this agenda item to step forward to the podium. Is anyone would like to speak? Mr. Edwards, you were not sworn in, were you? Okay. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. If you could state your name.
Tom Edwards, District One. I just had a question. Is, so when,
It's statements, no questions?
I understand. It's a statement. So if, as you brought up, that person makes a purchase and is going to walk out with a beer and sandwich and stuff like that, I would think that the personnel that are working the checkout counter needs to be able to advise the tourists there, their customers that are not familiar with the ordinance, that they can't open the container and walk around John's Pass with an open container. That's the only comment I had, is make that one of the conditions, that they train their staff and any new members coming in to that effect.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the public would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, there not being anyone else to speak on the agenda item, it's back to the commission for consideration and approval in the agenda packet. The recommendation of city staff is, they're recommending approval of ABP 2025-03.
I recommend the approval of ABP 2025-03, Bel Air Market, John's Pass.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobai?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr? Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ABP 2025-02, and I will hand this to the city attorney.
Thank you. This agenda item is to consider alcoholic beverage permit application for the Barefoot Beach Club. I want to go through the requirements of the code on this agenda item. So first of all, the applicant is Amanda Huffman for Barefoot Beach Resort South LLC. The properties are located at 13220 Gulf Boulevard, 13220 Gulf Boulevard Number One, 13220 Gulf Boulevard Number Two here in Madeira Beach. The city has received notices of intent from affected parties by the following names. Thomas Edwards, Cynthia Edwards, Ronald Loggett, Rose Loggett, Mitchell and Sandra Rayburn, Barbara Ray, and John Klein. So we'll address those as we move forward. I just wanted you to know that there are affected parties. The summary of the application is as follows. The applicant for the ABP 2025-02 is requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners for the approval of a special motel hotel for COP alcoholic beverage license with the intent to sell beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises at Barefoot Beach Club located at the same addresses that I just told you. Special Act 79-554 allows for hotels in Pinellas County of at least 50 hotel rooms to be able to apply for this special hotel motel alcoholic license, alcohol license. Barefoot Beach Club meets that 50 hotel room threshold. The standards to be applied, I'm just going to read them again quickly. Under Section 110-532, when considering the alcoholic beverage application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. Number one, the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. Number five, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The burden of proof is set forth in Section 2-10 of the code, and it reads as follows. The applicant shall have the burden of proof at the hearing to show by a greater weight of the evidence that the application is consistent with the city comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of law. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant, the city, or any party, or may be imposed by the board which are intended to assure consistency and compliance. I'm going to read the quasi-judicial procedures we're going to follow. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than legislative capacity. At this hearing, it's not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In this hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the end of the hearing and at, I'm sorry, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Wardenses in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Wardenses, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Wardenses, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this point, I need to ask each and every one of the commissioners whether they've had any expertise communications on this particular agenda item. I guess we'll start here with Commissioner Taglerini, and we'll go that direction. What I'd like you to do is, is to tell me who you spoke to, and what was the general conversation about this particular application?
Yes, I was, many residents in District One reached out to me regarding this. Most of them are here tonight. Mr. and Mrs. Loggett, Mr. and Mrs. Edwards. In addition, Joanne Clavon and the Board of the Chambre Condos. The general discussions were, this is inappropriate for our neighborhood. It's a primarily residential neighborhood. And we feel it would be disruptive to what has existed here for some time. That's the nature of how I was approached.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I have spoken with residents for years on,
I'm only concerned about since this application was filed.
Since the application was filed, Joanne Clavon, resident.
Okay, and the substance of the conversation?
Was a history of interaction between residents and Barefoot Beach Club.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Mayor, your turn.
I spoke with Joanne Clavon today for 13 minutes, and it was just general conversation on the neighbors and her interactions with the Barefoot Beach.
Okay, Commissioner McGinn?
Yes, I also spoke with several residents in my district concerning the the rooftop opening for the four COP.
Do you know who the individuals were that you spoke to?
Just joining neighbors, I can give you like the first name. I don't know their last names right off the bat.
Okay, why don't you give us the first names?
That would be Ray, Cassandra, Ed, and Nikki and Chris.
Okay. That's helpful. If you don't know the last name, I understand. Okay. And then Commissioner Gobai?
I haven't spoken with the ownership.
Have you spoken to anyone else with regard to this application?
Yes.
Okay, and who are the individuals you spoke with?
I spoke with Doug Andrews, just briefly.
Okay, and the substance of the conversation?
Just, he described the project. And I said that, you know, whatever the voters, whatever we vote on here would be, you know, would substantiate whatever needs to happen.
Okay. So now I need to ask each and every one of you, do any of you have any conflicts of interest that would prohibit you from considering this application? Okay, I'm seeing all those.
No.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and swear, and, well, before I do that, let me just confirm of the affected parties that we received notices from, who is in attendance, because that will be helpful. I know that Mr. Edwards is here. I see Mrs. Edwards is here. Mr. Loggett's here. Mrs. is here. Mitchell and Sandra Rayburn. Are they here? Okay. Barbara Ray. Is Barbara Ray here? No. John Klein? He's not here either. Okay, those are the only ones I listed. All right, so let me go ahead and swear in the witnesses. Okay. Mr. Morris, can you grab that? Did you receive that one? Is that a notice that the city received at least five days prior to today's hearing, Mr. Morris? Okay, we're going to add to the list, Gail. I'm sorry? Okay. How do you pronounce the last name, Judas?
Edis.
Edis. Okay, I'm going to butcher that name today. I apologize. All right, so let me go ahead and swear in the witnesses. Anyone that's going to speak on this agenda item, whether you're public, affected property owners, applicant, whatever, you raise your right hand, swear under oath. You swear that the testimony that you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, the order of presentation is going to be tonight, the applicant, then the city, and then the affected parties. And Mr. Onkst is here on behalf of his client. And I believe we have a PowerPoint on that, too. Whenever you're ready, Brian.
Do you all have the pointer or the clicker? Okay, all right, very good. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Onkst, 625 Court Street, McFarlane Ferguson and McMullen, here on behalf of the applicant, Barefoot Beach Resort South LLC. We do have a PowerPoint, as you see on the screen, and that has been submitted to the city. It's very similar to the PowerPoint that was provided to the special magistrate at the marathon hearing on May 27th, except this one addresses the approval criteria under Section 110-1530 and 531, as opposed to the special condition approval under Section D-105 Sub 6 Sub C. So as you know, this property is located in the C1 John's Pass Activity Center Transitional Zone. Under your code, Section 110-530, alcohol sales are a permitted use in the C1 zoning districts. Permitted uses include packaged stores, beer and wine, retail stores, beer and wine, packaged stores, beer and wine and liquor, restaurants, bars, and clubs shall be permitted in any district zone C1, C2, C3, or C4. As you also know, in order to get that alcohol license, we have to go through this application process under Section 110-532. The five approval criteria have been read to you multiple times tonight, including in the last application for John's Pass Village Activity Center, which you unanimously approved. And I will get into the revocation, if necessary, when we get there. It's important to note, if we, this is the site location, obviously, if we go to the next slide, it's important to note that the John's Pass Activity Center is an activity center. Its stated purpose is to memorialize the character of the tourist, commercial, and cultural center, and to provide for future enhancement and revitalization. Activity centers, as I'm sure you are all aware, are sites of more intense commercial uses, higher traffic activity, tourist promotion, and tourist rentals. The staff report, which Mr. Morris will go through here in a moment, on page two, or three, I'm sorry, page three, I think, is very informative in terms of the types of uses. In this neighborhood, all of these surrounding properties are zoned C1, John's Pass Village Activity Center Transitional District. That means all of them are open for commercial uses, including the single-family homes that are available to be rented as short-term rentals, and many of them, if not all of them, are. Obviously, many of them unfortunately have been going through the hurricane recovery. But when they are able to be occupied, most of them are rented out at least part of the year, which is great. That's what an activity center is for. The purple uses that you will see on, in the staff report are hotel and condo use. That's 46%. That's the primary use in this area, within 300 feet of the Barefoot Beach Club. The secondary use is multifamily residential, so like apartments, that's 24%. And then, commercial use and single-family residential are tied at 15%. Commercial use would obviously be retail sales and services, restaurants, and the like. So this truly is a mixed-use Activity Center District as laid out in the staff report. Going on to the next slide, please. This property, as you all know, is subject to a development agreement. And this project was developed as the Barefoot Beach Club Hotel, subject to a development agreement. On page two of the development agreement, which you see here on the PowerPoint, it's very clear, this is a table of uses, which is, I'm sure you see all often as a, like a civil engineered usage table. And it's clear that an ancillary rooftop bar, sun deck, fitness room, with typical and customary limited food service for hotel guests for their convenience only, was contemplated and approved at the time that this project was approved and developed by the city commission in a legislative hearing. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. As Mr. Trask has explained, you're here to listen to the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence. In a legislative hearing, you have a rational basis standard, which is much more lenient in terms of your legislative ability to approve or disapprove. So the city commission, the prior city commission legislatively approved this use already, at a much lower standard of evidence. And so then when we go to page five of the development agreement, if we can go to the next slide, please, and you can hit it again, that'll underline. This use is actually called out specifically in the development agreement. And it says, "The proposed roof deck, fitness room, and bar area shall be clearly ancillary and subordinate to the principal hotel use, which is consistent with your code, as Mr. Trask already laid out in the description. The proposed facilities are intended for the convenience of the hotel guests, and as such shall operate in a manner that is customary and incidental to the operation of a hotel. It is understood that the practice of providing at least some limited food service is a service expected by hotel guests, and a service that is routinely provided by hotels." And then it goes on to say, "Because of its limited nature, this ancillary restaurant does not increase the need for additional parking." The reason it doesn't increase the need for additional parking is because it won't result in any additional trips. It's for hotel guests only. The question was raised during the special magistrate hearing, how many parking spaces do you have? And the answer was, I believe, 84, 84 spaces provided. 73 spaces are required, and 84 spaces are provided on-site, and there are 73 rooms at the hotel. So again, there won't be any expected increase in traffic, because this use truly is ancillary to the already-approved hotel, and is for hotel guests only. If we go on to the next slide, please. This is the current site plan of the rooftop area. This was subject to the special exception use, the commercial use that was approved by Magistrate Valdez at the May 27 special magistrate hearing. There is nothing changing structurally on this site. It is staying exactly the same. So the only thing you're approving tonight, if you approve it, is the ability to sell alcohol to hotel guests only. You're not approving a new bar. You're not approving a new restaurant. There's no kitchen. It's very similar to the last application, where it's going to be food that's incidental to hotel use. It's not going to be a big kitchen. It's, again, I can't reiterate this enough, it's not for public consumption. There will not be people that are not staying at the hotel coming to consume alcohol here, or coming to buy a pressed Cuban, or a hot dog, or whatever. So the bar currently exists. It was approved in the site plan. It's there. There's an interior element of the bar, and then there's like a service window that operates kind of like, you know, one of those garage-type windows. It's not like a huge garage door, but a bar-type fold-up window. And then there's a bar area. There's a covered deck. There's a sun deck. There's an elevator, and that is the roof. It is not changing in character in terms of the structure of the roof. I also want to point out at this point, too, there's nothing prohibiting there's nothing prohibiting the hotel guests from buying alcohol off-site and consuming alcohol at the property at the moment. That is perfectly legal, perfectly allowed. There's nothing my clients can really do to stop them from doing that, other than, you know, and make sure they're enforcing the rules in terms of, you know, orderly conduct and noise and all of those things. But there are no restrictions on this property right now, other than what you have in your noise ordinance and your code of ordinances, because the development agreement itself expired when the certificate of occupancy was issued. So, there are no restrictions on this site right now. And when we get to the conditions of approval, and the conditions of approval that Special Magistrate Valdez already approved, I think it will demonstrate to you that there is going to be extreme accountability for this use, if you approve it. Not just from the neighbors, but from you, and also from the special magistrate. And we'll get into that more here in a moment. So if we go to the next slide, I just wanna go through the specific approval criteria, because that's required when I put on the evidence. I have to address each approval criteria. So the first approval criteria is the extent to which the location, and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. And we talked about how this is in the Johns Pass Village Activity Center Transitional District, as described in the code. "The development standards are an attempt to memorialize the character of the tourism, commercial, and cultural center, and to provide for future enhancement and revitalization. Approval of the request would further the goals by allowing the subject property to offer alcoholic beverages to guests, which will enhance the attractiveness of the hotel experience for the guest, and the convenience for the guest, and is contemplated and approved by the development agreement by the City Commission." And in approving the development agreement, the City Commission made a legislative finding that the approval of this use, along with the entire hotel project, was consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations of the code, at least as that code existed in 2015. So, there was a legislative finding that the ancillary bar restaurant for hotel guests only was compliant with your comprehensive plan and your codes, at least back in 2015. And that's consistent with the recommendation of approval you have tonight from your staff. The second approval criteria is the extent to which traffic generated will result in congestion or safety hazard. As stated, there will be no additional traffic, because it's for hotel guests only. We already have more-than-code-compliant parking, and the staff agrees with that analysis. The third criteria is whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it's proposed. Again, this use was already contemplated and approved by the original City Commission Development Agreement. That was obviously subject to public hearing, there was notice. You've seen some emails from opponents who have said, "I've been fighting this since 2015." And they have, but it's been approved since 2015, and they just haven't acted on actually seeking the approval to do the sales, which is what they're seeking tonight. But again, it is a permitted use in the C1 district. It is a permitted use in the Johns Pass Village Center, and it is compatible with those standards, just like the last application was. And number four is whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. Again, this is where those conditions of approval come in. So I'm not gonna spend too much time on this right now, because I'm gonna go through each condition of approval, and that's where you're gonna see that accountability, that enforceability. If this becomes a party deck, if this becomes a spring-break hub, if there are people that are not supposed to be there, if there's overuse of city resources and law enforcement resources, you guys can yank this on 15 days' notice. The special magistrate can also yank it. So not only can you yank it, the special magistrate can also yank the approval, at least for the commercial use on the site. Number five is that we don't owe any fees, and we don't. So number five is, I think, clearly indisputable. And that's the last approval criteria. So let's go through the conditions of approval. And I wanna just start by saying, we've kinda blended here the conditions that the staff's recommending with the conditions the special magistrate already approved. So the special magistrate, in his order dated June 7th, ordered granting special exception use with conditions, he's already imposed, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 conditions, which, a lot of which the public asked for, the affected parties asked for those conditions, and we agreed, you know, to every condition that they requested. So the first condition is no amplified music, and no amplification of sound, including but not limited to radios, stereos, karaoke machines, and television shall be permitted on the open rooftop. And that is a condition that has already been put in the special exception use. And most of what we're hearing is concerns about noise. That's a lot of what we're hearing. Number two is the applicant will comply with all noise ordinances, provisions of the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances. So if you do find that the city is citing, or the sheriff is citing noise violations, you can use that as a basis to revoke it right there. So, again, this extra layer of accountability. Not only are we saying we're not gonna do it if we violate that, and there's a record of it, you can have a hearing and revoke the approval. Number three is no events on the open rooftop that include non-hotel guests. That means hotel guests only on the rooftop. The meeting of hotel guests for this use is a registered overnight hotel-room occupant. Number four is there shall be no special events. So your code has a definition of special events, and that includes 50 people or more, whether they're guests of the hotel or not. So that means we will have no special events. There will not be events of 50 people or more on the open rooftop. Number five is that if you approve the alcohol license, that we will operate under the definition of a restaurant, which means that we have to have 60% of the sales from food and non-alcoholic beverages, not items, like not hats, not shirts, you know, food and non-alcoholic beverages, and that we have to follow up with an annual financial report, which is just exactly what the condition on Catties. So this is a common condition when you have public opposition to something like this, and it's been working. I mean, Catties is able to demonstrate that they have 60% food. They provide those reports to the city, and this would be the same process that's already in place, and that has been used in the past. And number six just simply says that this is consistent with the development agreement, which, again, it is. I mean, the development agreement clearly approved a bar/restaurant use for hotel guests as an ancillary use of the hotel. Number seven is that any lighting on the open rooftop must comply with the lighting requirements. Again, we're not adding any lighting that's not already there, we're in compliance. We haven't had any complaints about lighting, so I think that one's objectively fine. Number, I don't know what happened to number eight. Oh, that's a big one. Number eight is the open rooftop shall close at 9:00 PM. So that was one that was requested specifically, I believe, by Ms. Edwards or Ms. Leggett. That was important for them, and we are totally fine with that. You're gonna meet my clients here in a moment, Mr. and Mrs. Huffman, and they're gonna say a few words, but they don't wanna be there after 9:00 PM themselves, right? They've got kids, they're, you know, a lot of times they're at the hotel. They do not want this to be a TGI Fridays, or, you know, not to disparage any restaurants. They don't want this to be a party place. They want it to be subdued, low-key place for their guests, where they can relax, enjoy the views, and, you know, take in the scenery here on Madeira Beach. Number nine was another one that was requested by the affected parties. Apparently, there was an issue where the dumpsters were moved out of the dumpster enclosure into the parking lot at the request of Public Works for accessibility reasons. So we've agreed that the dumpsters will be screened from public view, and we've already applied for an enclosure permit. My client's been emailing back and forth with Ms. Webfer, the Public Works Director. They're all over that, the permit's already been applied for. So there won't be any open dumpsters, they will be enclosed, and we're already working on that. Number 10 was all deliveries to the property should be made on the property. Delivery vehicles, parking on Golf Lane will be prohibited. Again, that was brought up for the first time at the hearing. Apparently, there was a laundry, delivery, pickup truck that was coming twice a day, parking in Golf Lane. They texted during the hearing, said, "Don't do that, park in the parking lot," and that has been remedied, as far as I know, and it's a condition of approval. So if it keeps happening, and you get a picture of it, you can put us on notice and revoke the approval. I mean, that, we're talking about real strict restrictions here, like tailored to address concerns that were raised by the affected parties, and to protect them, and to give them the ability to hold us accountable. And then number 11 is, again, just that you may revoke this, and that is also in your code. Section 110-537, revocation of alcoholic beverage zoning. So you already have the right to do that by code, but we're also making it a condition of approval, just like the special magistrate. We go to the next slide. Again, the special magistrate entered an order on June 7th after the May 27th hearing. That hearing lasted five and a half hours, where he considered significant amount of evidence. There was 13 affected parties that presented evidence and cross-examined and opposed the application. And at the end of the day, the special magistrate approved it with the conditions as outlined. And he found that, he made these findings, that the use subject to the conditions will not cause substantial injury to the value of the property in the neighborhood where it is located. The use subject to the conditions outlined below will be compatible with adjoining development and the proposed character of the district where it is to be located. Adequate landscaping and screening is provided. Adequate off-street parking and loading, subject to the conditions outlined below, is provided. Ingress/egress is designed to cause minimum interference. The use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where it is located, and that the special exception will not grant the land more privilege than the best use available in a zone where that special exception would be a principal permitted use. So he made all of those findings based on the competent substantial evidence that was presented at that hearing, as your special magistrate, who serves as a third-party neutral, and has served the city for many years. And that was based on the staff's recommendation of approval. It was based on our application and the evidence that was submitted. And I think, you know, that really goes a long way, I think, to swaging the concerns that I'm assuming you're going to hear again tonight. I do wanna just let Mr. and Mrs. Huffman introduce themselves briefly, we'll wrap up. And then we're, of course, available for questions. That may come across examination, so I'll let Mr. Trask tell us when that's appropriate. But you've heard it all, Amanda, from the last hearing. What would you like to tell the commission?
First, hello, I'm Amanda Huffman. And while my husband and I both manage Barefoot Hotel, the restaurant/bar will be my baby, more or less. We, I just want everyone to know, I really wanna work in harmony with the neighbors, and which we've tried really hard to do. It's absolutely not a wild party space. Our daughter is 16, and she's already said, "Can I work there? I wanna serve in the restaurant." So it's something that'll very much be family-run for truly just the convenience of our in-house guests.
Thank you very much. I did wanna just also preemptively state, Mr. Morris asked us about Golf Lane and the bifurcation of the two buildings. There will be no alcohol that is unsealed, but there will be no alcohol carried off premises. It's all for consumption on-site, and it's all for consumption by hotel guests. There's a fence, before you can get to Golf Lane, there'll be signage. We're, you know, we're gonna have people out there. Again, the rooftop closes at 9:00, so this is not gonna be a late-night sight. The pool, what time does the pool close?
The pool closes at dusk.
The pool closes at dusk, so there won't be anybody out there, you know, after 8:00 PM some nights, and even earlier during daylight savings time, so. Thank you all very much.
Okay, hold on, Brian.
Yes.
So, any questions from the commission to any of the people that are standing here, before we go to the affected parties?
I have a lot of them. Do y'all have questions?
I have a couple.
Yes, please, yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure which one of you'd ask, but I'll just throw it out there. Johns Pass Activity Center designation was brought up many times. Transitional zone. Are you aware that there are several character zones in the Johns Pass Activity Center designation?
Yes, that is a true statement.
Would you say that the transitional zone characteristic district is the same as the commercial core?
It is not, it has different intended uses, for sure.
Thank you. So, I need to ask, because on, somewhere in the application, I read, sorry, that you said, the number, there are 42 indoor seats and 77 outdoor seats on the roof, which totals 119 seats. First of all, did I read that right? I think I did, it was from the application.
Let me see if I can find that specifically.
And my question is, so you know, just while you're looking for that, I understand that events are limited to 50, but is there anything that prevents 119 people from going to the roof? You could possibly have that many guests, right?
I read that condition to say there's not gonna be more than 49 people on the roof at any given time. That's the way I read that condition.
Okay.
Let's see, if I can find that page that you're referencing. Do you, can you maybe hold it up?
I can't, because I copied and pasted it into my notes.
Okay, that's all right. Let's see.
Sorry, I didn't mean to leave it hanging there.
Okay, did you wanna just address that?
I can, sorry, I can just kind of describe the seating. How whenever I counted seating, we have like a little love seat, so it would be you could fit two people there. And then we have lounge chairs, so if people wanna sunbathe there. So it's not bar stools or significant amount of tables. There's a lot of sun loungers, so you can just go relax and sunbathe.
And, I mean, would there be any, if we're limiting it to 50, is there any way you can monitor that?
Yes, so we are there on-site, and the fact that we'll be closing at 9:00 the bar and restaurant area, we are very much able to. If any hotel guests wanna have like a group gathering, the only person that could approve that would be me, and then obviously Erin. And I just, I say no a whole lot to people, because we wanna keep the family ambiance of the property. We do not want this to turn into anything we could not control. We don't hire people out, everything's done within the family. So that's, that's part of why.
Thank you.
The other thing I did just wanna address on that question, sir, is that the rooftop can only be accessed with a room key. So the elevator doesn't just let anybody get up to the roof.
It's like a QR code or something, they gotta slide in and out. So regarding the license itself, this is a four COP license. Just to be clear, this requires a 60/40 ratio food to alcoholic beverages, correct?
Food and non-alcoholic beverages, 60% to 40% for alcohol.
Right. I also read in the application, it says, "We are not working on any kitchen plans at this time." So when you say restaurant, what are you describing, if there's no kitchen?
So, basically, quick service. We had the idea, everything we do is thoughtful, right? So this was initially approved back in 2015, here we are 10 years later. It's because everything's done with a lot of thought. Still thoughts going in, we continue to communicate with the city on what they would even suggest. But chips, salsa, pretzels, sandwiches. We have a dear friend who's a chef that has a licensed kitchen that he does, you know, he would possibly create meals for us to be able to warm up, and then give to the guests, but we don't wanna grease trap or a full-service restaurant. However, because we're geared more toward families, kids eat a lot more than I think adults do, and they're always snack, snack, smore stuff, you know, candy, chips, pop. It adds up extremely, extremely fast.
And I assume that you are confident that you can maintain that 60/40 ratio with snacks and sandwiches?
I actually really am. I've been helping assist with restaurants in Costa Rica, North Carolina, Amelia Island, Sedona, Arizona, and in California for about 10 years now. I've learned a significant amount about even running a small cafe, and I'm very confident I could successfully do so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the questions I have.
I'll go next. Mr. and Mrs. Huffman, so do you, are you owners of this, or you just, are you managers? What is, what are your titles?
So I am a manager of the property. My father-in-law owns the LLC that owns the business. We've been running it for him for...
I am a managing partner on the LLC.
Okay. So, I was on your website today, and it seems like events are, are...
So, we do continue to advertise events, because we've partnered with West Events to be able to push all of our event traffic to them. And then we supply the rooms for any of the occupants that are gonna be at the event. So, instead of losing the event or the room revenue from events and pulling that from the website, we've continued to advertise, even though we're not doing events at the property, because when they inquire about an event, we push them to West Events to be able to maintain that revenue for the city, as well as the room revenue for the hotel.
Do you have an event planner on staff?
No, so that, again, I handle all of that, but I, we've had a lot of meetings with West Events, because we did not want to do events, that's why we met with them. So basically, what I do is I send all of the events to them, and then if somebody needs accommodations only, I'll work with them to go ahead and set up accommodations only.
Thank you. You mentioned the planned development, I believe, 15 years ago, or...
The development agreement?
Development agreement.
Yes, sir.
And just brief research that I had, I understood that that development agreement... And just brief research that I had, I understood that that development agreement was for 15 to 20 people.
I did not see that in the, do you have a reference?
I just threw, it may be referenced in some of the emails from residents. I know I read it somewhere. I'm not, I'm not going to...
The development agreement, as far as I read it, does not have any restrictions on the number of people or events, or amplified music, or any of the restrictions.
I believe, I saw it as a, as a email, I believe, from the city to a resident, and that was from the city to the...
Yeah, I've not seen that email, sir, so I don't know anything about it, I'm sorry.
The city states, bear with me. The applicant's proposed alcohol use will need to meet the requirements for restaurants, but there's no, located in section 110-527, but there's no restaurants. You're not going to build a restaurant. You're going to do snacks and...
That, that definition only requires the 60% sales for food and non-alcohol, just like kind of the last people. They had to meet the restaurant category too, even though they're quick service.
You're not going to cater, you're not going to cater events? You're not going to cover the food by having catered events?
No, that's not in any scope of anything I ever would like to do. No, absolutely not.
I did want, you're right about, you're in the transition, transitional zone, not in the village, so wanted to bring that up. Bear with me. If there's any other notes that I made that I haven't brought up yet. So the, the city staff made a recommended approval, but with a, a list of seven items. No amplified music, no raucous noise, no special events, 60% sales, restaurant definition, I don't, my, like I said earlier, my hesitation is that...
No, hold off now.
Okay.
Please do not make your...
Thank you.
...presentation, or until we get all the evidence in before you to make your decision as to how you're going to act on this. Okay.
So, we're going to go down the line. I'm going to go next. So, Amanda, how long have you actually worked for the hotel?
Our daughter is 16. I was pregnant, so 17 years.
Okay. When you talk about music on the rooftop, and there are all the restrictions, because one of the biggest concerns I've heard over the years is the music. What are you, what are you envisioning that you would have up there for music that would be compliant?
There's no music.
There is no music.
There'll be no music at all?
Honestly, we want to keep it also that quiet sun deck. I don't plan to move the loungers either.
Okay. So you said, for food, snacks, I, I mean, I can totally see how you can keep the 60/40 with snacks, because if you're doing, what you're talking about doing would be entirely reasonable. But if you're not talking about any kind of catering, because originally I had just envisioned that you would have someone cater, what are you envisioning as an event? If the, if it's not catered, and there's not a kitchen, per se, what's the event? If I was going to have an event at the hotel, what would the event be?
We really are not doing events. That's why we partner with West Events. So if you had like five people that want to do a dinner party, I'm sure you could do that, or we could give you some snacks, but I'm not. Any event would go straight to West Events.
Okay. So what I'm trying to understand is, there's opposition to you being able to have events. The alcohol hasn't been so much of an issue, and the events have already been approved, because the magistrate approved that. So we're here talking about alcohol. But there's not, I just want to clarify on the event comment, that 49 people, right? 49 people is all you can have on the roof at any given time, but it's not really an event. If they're not having weddings, if they're not having receptions, if they're not doing that, it's just a gathering of people, and you're wanting to be able to have a license to serve alcohol, because you want to sell the alcohol.
For their convenience.
Right, for their convenience.
And that's correct, Madam Mayor. So the issue is, this condition is drafted to attempt to address the city code definition of a special event. There is no city code definition of a non-special event, or a regular event. So a special event under the city code is 50 people or more, and that was the intent. But just because we say no special events, that, that doesn't mean that we're going to be leasing it out for other events, or non-special events. I mean, for example, if I, let's say my family and I were taking an informal family reunion to Madeira Beach, and we wanted to stay at the hotel. We could go up there, 14 of us, 20 of us, 25 of us, and order some food, and, you know, have a few adult beverages, if that was what we were inclined to do. But that would not be an event under the city code. That wouldn't be an event under law, and, you know, you're not leasing it out for events. So that's, I think that's the intent. And correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. Another thing is, too, events, if we had an event, would disrupt our in-house guests that are paying the same as much as every other guest, and I don't want to do that. It has to be the same for everybody.
So when, and I read this in, I read this in an email, I believe, one of the concerns a resident had emailed to us was about that the, the hotel is not staffed 24/7. So there's not someone sitting at the front desk 7 days a week, 24 hours a day.
So not at the front desk, no. We do have an on-site, though, property manager, who actually is, he lives on-site. So he's there 24/7, and he makes rounds about every 30 minutes or more, anytime the office is not open. And then we also are there many, many times after-hours as well. The office is not physically open, but you, you'll always find someone on-site.
Okay.
And we also have a, we have an after-hours telephone number that is posted. Anytime the office is not open, it rings five, five of our cell phones, so it'll, you'll get somebody all the time.
Okay, I think just one more question. I've never been in the hotel, so I'm, I don't, so if, if you have the alcohol license, and to me, there's two buildings. There's one building on Gulf Boulevard, and then Gulf Lane runs between, and then there's another building. So if you have the alcohol license in the building, the new building, and I'm there, and I'm a guest, and I buy a drink, I cannot take that drink to the other building.
Correct. You cannot bring any open or uncoated container.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Hello. Good evening. I just have a couple of quick questions for you. Will be, will there be training available that you're going to have for your bartenders and servers, as far as the self-serve classes and ID?
Yes, we are going to do all of the training and all the food service certifications as well.
Sure, so your bartenders will be certified?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And we just basically touched on this. Do you have any security on your property that's, like, that's going to be there, that's going to help shut down that rooftop at 9:00?
As of right now, that only one is the staff. Well, we close a lot of times the property at 9:00, the office, and they go around and lock everything to make sure everything is shut down. And then we have that associate who lives on property. So he acts as security. We've had security companies before, and unfortunately, we've had a lot of issues with them, not checking things they're supposed to, and they're, really, we had difficulty with checks and balances, so it was better to hire that in-house.
Okay, and so the rooftop will be closed at 9:00. So it'll, that'll be shut down, closed, locked up?
So whenever you go up to the roof deck, you take the elevator up, the stairways are on the exterior. So due to fire code, we have to allow people to access those stairways. However, the entire inside vestibule will be locked.
Okay. And you mentioned, one more thing, West Events, you guys partnership with West Events across the street?
Yes.
And how is that working out, Charles?
I think it's going really well. They seem happy. They've gotten a couple of events, and then we get accommodations, nightly rentals out of it. And I've had...
I, I think the, the symmetry that worked the best for West Events and our property versus Cambria, because I know they were sending a lot of their hotel guests to Cambria, but it was so far away. And so if they're doing an event, our guests can walk to West Events instead of having a shuttle, which also, you know, keeps parking down, you know, because they can stay where they're at, and just walk across the street to the event. That's worked really well. And then anytime that they inquire about an event that we host any of the occupants, we always issue them a discount code, so we can track how many reservations we are getting from West Event customers. So yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I handle all of that too, so I have direct communication with the guests and whoever is booking, and so they're all very well aware of what the policies are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
There won't be any on-street signage, or it could encourage traffic to stop and check out the rooftop?
No, absolutely not. It's not open to the public.
Okay. As far as the rooftop itself, do you have a parapet wall for protection of...
Can we put the applicant's PowerPoint back up? I think I have a picture of it.
I saw that. Is that like glass, right?
Let's go, that one right there, I'm sorry, number eight. There you go. So you can kind of see Commissioner Guehi, the roof, and that vestibule is in the center, that flat top building. And so you can see the architectural details and the features and the covered deck there.
What's the height of it, do you know?
Of the hotel? Well, I can tell you that the development agreement, I'm sure addresses that. It's five floors above parking.
No, not height of the building, height of the parapet wall.
Oh, I don't know about the height of the parapet wall. The height, in the development agreement, says 68 and a half feet above BFE to top of roof, five stories over parking. So that's just the top of the roof, which I would assume they would include the vestibule on the top of the roof, but I did not handle this development agreement in 2015, so that would be an assumption.
Well, the only reason I ask that is for public safety. If, you know, you may be drinking, and you're leaning against a wall, I want to make sure that wall is high enough where...
So I know my, I'm not good at measurements when it comes to feet, okay? But I know my nine-year-old, we have a nine-year-old, he has trouble, like, he wouldn't be able to lean over it, right? So he's 54 inches? But it's, so like here?
And then we have wires, like cabling.
Can you get in front of the microphone, so everybody can hear you, please?
So the, the wall itself comes to about mid-stomach on me, and then there's cabling that's on top of it, like wired cabling, to keep people from reaching over.
So any safety concerns will not be a liability of the city, whatever happens on top of the roof?
I understand. And we, we also understand that we have the right to refuse service, right? So if a guest seems to be out of hand, that they will be refused service. I can guarantee you that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, hang on a second, Brian. We need to do the cross-examination. So I'm going to go through the affected property owners. If you would like to ask a question, I'm going to need you to step forward to the microphone, so we can get it on the microphone. But I'm going to start in the order of priority that I have them on my list. So the first person is Mr. Edwards. Do you have any questions of these individuals? Can you pick up the microphone up over here? Maybe you could sit here and use that microphone, and then we can get them on the microphone there. Hopefully that will work.
You said that you have online manager there, on-premise manager? Who is that, and where is he staying at? What room?
I don't want to disclose. Would I like to disclose, for his safety, which room, number he's at, but he's, he's there 24/7, I mean...
We're not talking about the maintenance guy?
No, I have separate maintenance. I have two maintenance individuals. I have a supervisor and a helper, but he's not, he does not do maintenance.
So how long has this person been there? Employed?
Um, he's, he took this, he took the place of a recently departed employee, so he's been there two months now.
And he's living on-premise?
Correct.
And you say, so when the office closes at 9:00, so from 9:00 until you open the next morning at 9:00?
Correct.
He's working a 12-hour shift and walking the property?
He responds to any calls that we receive, or any issues.
Well, you just said that he's traveling, walking around the property every 30 minutes.
He does walk the property, yes.
All during the midnight shift?
So he doesn't do it every single minute. Security companies typically have a 30-minute or 45-minute check-in, where they'll scan a device or something. We can see him actually on camera throughout the property, and so he does check the property, the pool. He goes upstairs to the roof, yes.
So this is a seven-day operation. Does he work seven days, or he work five days?
We also have another associate who lives nearby, who also checks the property at night as well.
So he comes on property and works during that time period?
He does. It's walkable.
So...
And also, my family basically stays on property all summer, so we all check the property as well.
So at the magistrate hearing, you said that you had a zero tolerance for noise, right? And, you know, I showed a video where a person was screaming and yelling from one of the balconies on the sixth floor, and we have people from your facility that go down and shoot off fireworks. So does this person ever go down, that, that walks the property, since you own to the water?
I just want to object to that question. It mischaracterizes the testimony at the hearing, and puts a bunch of facts that aren't in evidence, but I'll let them answer, but it's not an accurately stated question.
It's also accusations, unfortunately, and I will not speak on those. However, we have not any noise. We do shut down noise immediately.
Does that include fireworks?
We do not condone the use of fireworks. We have not used fireworks. In fact, there's a neighbor who shoots off fireworks, which I've spoken to the city in regard to that issue as well.
No, I understand, but if, if your guests are down there using fireworks, and you're...
We do not allow that.
...person that manages the property and is on your property, do you address that, since it's a zero tolerance?
Right, we, we don't permit fireworks on the property. We, we've been for years, and you, and even Bob Bello, which is a neighbor of both of ours, can contest that he's been in direct communication with the neighbor that, that manufactures the fireworks out of his house at 133rd and shoots them off, that he would get text messages before he would shoot them, so it wouldn't disrupt his dogs. But the, the fireworks are not anything to do with the property. I have correspondents from my guests complaining about the fireworks, and they're not from us. They're from, they're from a resident that's been there for years and years.
Yet I've seen, I've seen people from the beach walk right back to your motel. That's why I'm asking whether your manager, at that time, would address that issue if there are guests there.
Hold on a second. We're getting way off mark, Mr. Edwards. This is the alcoholic beverage permit. If you could focus your questions about this application, and not other issues that are happening at the property, we can get this accomplished much quicker. But I don't think you're going down the path that is anywhere relevant to the permit for the alcoholic beverage license. So if you could, well, limit your questions to this permit application?
The point is, is alcohol, many times, makes noise.
And you'll be able to have your ability to make any presentation that you want, make, and make those points that you're trying to make here, when your time comes up?
Thank you. So the next question is, your application said that you're going to sell alcohol from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Those are just the opening and closing hours, so if you want muffins, or fruit, or something, or a coffee, you should be able to purchase that at hotel you're staying at.
Does that sound like some serious alcoholics wanting to start drinking at 9:00 in the morning?
Muffins and coffee?
You're not going to respond to that. We're not responding to that.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Edwards?
That use includes the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages, just like every other quick-service hotel in the state of Florida.
But they're asking for 9:00 AM. I didn't know if the hours were going to be adjusted.
It's for all sales, all commercial sales of alcoholic, non-alcoholic, and food, just like Disney World has their coolers open when they're operating.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Edwards, do you have any questions that you wanted to ask these individuals? I would again ask if you could take this seat and use that microphone, so we can hear.
I just, I just had one question. As I was going through your application, and I'm not sure if this is even a question here, but on page 307 of the packet, there was a section for check license category and license information.
Thank you for having a specific site, so I can find it. Thank you for having a specific site so I can find it, I appreciate that very much, Ms. Edwards. Three oh seven, okay, so this is the state of Florida, DBPR, Department of Business and Professional Regulation, local zoning sign-off, which cannot be signed off on unless and until the commission approves the use, but this is a form from the state of Florida, and our application, I don't believe our application, well, anyway, go ahead, please ask your question.
Okay, so my question is on section two, license information, it states that the mailing address is one three two three eight Gulf Boulevard, and then later down, in the next section, it's, the mailing address gives the address of one three two two zero Gulf Boulevard. I did look in the property appraiser site and there wasn't an address for that.
Go ahead and explain that if you can.
So I didn't know if that was a, a problem, a mistake, a typo?
It could, well, I wouldn't say it was a mistake, but the previous address before we built the new building was one three two three eight, and then the new address when we built the new building was one three two two zero, so it just took precedence over the one three two three eight.
Do you receive mail addressed to both?
Yes.
Well, the one three two three eight, when the Starks had the place, it was Gulf Lane, not Gulf Boulevard on that particular side of the...
Questions, ma'am? Questions?
So that was my only, that was my only question, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to have two addresses.
They can receive mail addressed to both addresses.
Thank you, Mrs. Edwards.
If we have to amend that application, we will. Thank you.
So next, Mr. Loggett? Do you have questions, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
The sketch you provided of the rooftop, is that where you're gonna dispense alcohol?
On the roof deck. Yes, it would be available for sale on the roof deck, consistent with the commercial use that was approved by the magistrate, yes, sir.
Where else?
The poolside.
At poolside?
Yes.
Yes, so because we don't, you can't have anybody carrying alcohol across Gulf Lane, we do want the ability to be on the pool deck if someone wants a bottle of water or a spray or a beer, they would be able to purchase it from an onsite attendant at the pool, and then they would have to drink that at the pool.
Do you have a sketch of that where you'd be dispensing alcohol?
No, I'm actually working with the city on that right now.
Yeah, that's not part of the application.
But you just said you're gonna serve it there.
Yeah, the approval would be to serve it throughout the hotel, I mean, it could be served in the rooms, if someone called, like, if you stay at a room service, you could call the room service, and this would make the hotel able to sell alcohol, is my understanding, it wouldn't be limited only to the rooftop and the pool, it would be available for sale in the hotel, just like the food and the beverages would. And if you bought it on the roof, you could carry it to your room, as long as you're not taking it off-site.
That site being building two.
Building two, is that what you refer to it as?
That's where the, that's where the sketch is, in building two. You have no sketch of the, of the pool, where you're gonna be dispensing alcohol?
We didn't, the sketch of the pool was not required for this application, this application isn't approving the sale of alcohol only on the rooftop, I think that's where we're confused. The rooftop commercial use was approved by the special magistrate because under section D dash one oh five sub-six sub-C, it's a rooftop, open-air balcony is required to have a special exception, commercial use, and that's why the focus at that hearing was on the rooftop. I believe you all did bring up the pool at that hearing, and the magistrate made it clear he wasn't approving anything for the pool at that hearing, that would be coming from the commission. There is no prohibition on the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at the pool right now, because you don't need a permit for that, you don't need a special exception use for that. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't, because I don't see a sketch of the pool where you're gonna be dispensing alcohol.
I think there's, what, yeah, staff just pulled up a sketch, that's, that is part of the development agreement? Or is that part of the site plan?
That's from the application.
Okay, so that was apparently, apparently was in the application, sir, I stand corrected.
So you're saying that blueprint is part of the application?
Yes, sir.
Yes? I'm reading a sketch of premise that instructions on Form DPR ABT six thousand and one, which is the application, says, "Sketch of premise, quote, 'A complete sketch of the premises drawn in ink or computer-generated, letter size, which includes all permanent wall, doors, windows, counters, labeling, each room and area, include any outside area where alcohol beverages will be sold, consumed, and served. Due to the difficulty of scanning, no blueprints are accepted.'" That's a blueprint.
Sir, this is a separate application filed with the state of Florida, our firm handles those applications on a regular basis, it is common, just like with the city, to get comments, so I am sure that if DPPR feels like we need to supplement that application, we will. The only reason it's in here is because it requires a local zoning sign-off, and that zoning sign-off just says that you have the zoning allowed to sell alcohol, it doesn't say, the city's not approving it to be, DPPR requires the seating plan, they require the sketch, all of that stuff, and that's a separate process that is only gonna happen if this gets approved with the conditions that have been outlined.
Zoning for that premise.
What's that?
Zoning for that premise.
The entire building, the entire property, that's, that's, that's the zoning that we're talking about. The, the building does not have split zonings, it's one zoning, it's either, it's approved or it's not.
You mentioned that right now, people can bring alcohol up to the rooftop, correct?
People can buy alcohol off-site, like at Publix or anywhere else, and bring it into the hotel, and they can, they can enjoy it, and you guys have rules right now that you have in place, so, do you wanna describe that?
If, if the license is approved, are you still gonna allow that?
I don't see how they could not allow it unless the person is breaking one of the rules, if the person is disorderly, if the person is making noise, if the person is...
You can't have glass?
Yeah, why don't you describe it?
But you also can't have any glass on property, especially by the pool deck.
Right, but if you go to any alcohol establishment, you're not allowed to bring your boo and booze in there.
Questions, Mr. Loggett? Do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, what's your question?
Basically, are you gonna allow people to bring alcohol to an establishment that already has a four C O P?
So, because it is a hotel, this is not a bar, I think it's been very, very misunderstood. It is, it's a place for our guests to eat and grab a drink if they so choose, however, it is not my place to force anybody to eat on our property, because we, of course, want them to go to John's Pass or the Cantina across the street and eat if they so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Loggett, do you have questions?
I do.
Okay.
I just have a few questions with some point of clarification. It seems that it's been brought up that the previous committee had approved the sale of alcohol. Is that your impression?
The previous commission approved those uses in terms of the development agreement, that didn't give them the right to sell alcohol, because they still had to go through this process under section one ten dash five three one, as we previously discussed. So, the use was contemplated and approved, we don't have to, it, it's consistent with the development agreement, it's consistent with what was presented to the commission and the public, but we had to go through this extra step to get the actual ability to sell, which is why they don't sell yet, because they don't have that approval.
Right, and that previous approval, did it ever contain the word alcohol?
It says, it's, well, no, it says ancillary rooftop bar with typical and customary limited food service for hotel guests for their convenience only, and then it says, "The bar area shall be ancillary, and the, the proposed facilities are intended for the convenience of the hotel guests, and as such shall operate in a manner customary in its own, to the operation of a hotel. It is understood that the practice of providing at least limited food service is a service expected by hotel guests and a service that is routinely provided." So the word alcohol itself isn't in there, but the word bar is used at least twice.
That is correct, and it is your assumption that when they refer to bar, it's not a food service bar or a snack bar, you're assuming that they meant it was an alcohol bar?
I think that, you know, in my interpretation, if someone said that they wanted the city commission to approve a bar, that would include alcohol sales, absolutely, yes.
Okay, were you a part of the discussions with the neighborhood when that approval was going through, that we did fight that all the way down the line as far as a bar?
Were you involved with this? I was not, I assume you would fight it because you understood bar to mean alcohol as well, but no, I was not personally.
Well, that's why it would, did not contain the word alcohol, it, it didn't. The other thing is, is I noticed on some of the drawings that it showed building one, building two, and then it also showed your property all the way down to the high-watermark.
I'm trying to tell you which drawing you're referring to?
Right there.
That's the property appraiser site, that is a picture from the property appraiser site.
Okay, however, when, when your calculation was done as far as the commercial properties and things like that, it included the beach property, all the way down to the high-watermark in your calculation, did it not?
Alcohol will not be served on the beach, it's not allowed to be served on the beach, that green line is, my understanding, is the property line, and, and you guys can take it from there, but no, there will not be any alcohol sales or service on the beach that is not allowed, it's not allowed in your code, and it's not gonna happen. It's limited to the property, which includes the pool, you can see the pool isn't even on the beach, it's on the right-hand side of that picture there, so it doesn't even, the pool doesn't even back up to the beach.
How do you intend to sell alcohol at the pool site? What is your dispensing mechanism?
So, that goes back to everything being a thoughtful and kind of drawn-out process for me. Right now, it would be having like a can of beer in some sort of refrigerated device and, or, or water or soda, 'cause again, I, I don't want anybody to think this is a bar, it's truly food and beverages, both alcoholic and non.
A tiki bar type arrangement?
No, I don't, no, no, ma'am.
Any structural improvement such as a tiki bar or anything like that would require a site plan approval, so as I said, there are no, there are no permanent structures being added to the site, and anything that she's referencing would be like a refrigerator, like an appliance, or like a portable cooler with wheels, none of that requires planning or land use review, and those things would be put away and locked up at night, is that correct?
But it would require somebody to assist with the dispensing, because you have to check IDs.
Absolutely.
So, also, somebody from the pool area could go up to your, is that building one or building two? The old building is one, right? On Gulf Lane, that's the address on Gulf Lane.
Gulf Lane's the first building, and then on...
That's building one, right, and the other one is two. So go up to the rooftop and building two, buy alcohol, and then traverse across a public roadway to the pool.
If they, so you're, you're, wait, could you repeat that? I don't understand your question.
There's a public roadway that would have to be crossed if someone was to buy alcohol from upstairs, and then it'd be served to them across Gulf Lane?
It's not being served across Gulf Lane, it's only being served in that building that you see there.
But you just said it could be served also on Gulf Lane?
No, ma'am, it's either or, so you would either buy your food and your drinks at the roof deck building or the pool.
But I could go up the elevator, buy it, and then cross the street and...
If it is a closed beer, then they would be able to cross the street, however, it, we would not open it and pour it in a cup for that.
So it would be packaged?
It would have to be.
Okay. Let me see, if you give me one moment.
Take your time.
I think the original thought process for many of us here would...
Ma'am, questions? Questions?
I'm gonna get there. Was that this was going to be at the rooftop only, and I think the residents were going to accept that, however, it seems that, from what you're telling me today, am I correct in this, in, in my thought process, that this is going to be alcohol sales on both premises, on Gulf Boulevard as well as Gulf Lane?
The, the answer to the question is, right now, my focus is the building on the street. I would currently don't have a plan to have anybody from nine to nine selling anything at the pool side, however, we would want the ability to maybe at some, I don't know, we're focused on that street building right now.
Yeah, and the answer is that it would approve the sale of alcohol on premises, and it has to comply with all the other codes and ordinances of the city, which does not allow open alcohol in that street, like you said, or in the right of ways, like was asked for the, of the last applicant, and the consumption would have to take place on-site, and if someone violated that, they would be breaking the law, and then you could document that, and the commission could pull the approval, or the special magistrate could pull the approval, which is why we say there's a lot of accountability here.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the last affected party, Gail, do you have questions? Okay.
Okay, my first question is, who determines that there is a violation?
So you would make a code complaint, that would be investigated, if it's found that the city believes there was a code violation, they would either bring that to the special magistrate. This question was kind of asked at the special magistrate hearing, it was, how many times? How many times do you have to violate before it gets revoked? And so my answer to that was, obviously, that's going to be subjectively up to the decision-makers, whether it's the magistrate or the commission. If this, if there's one violation every five years, I would, and it's corrected with notice, I would hope that that wouldn't cause somebody to revoke the, the approval. If it happens frequently despite notice and despite, and, you know, everyone saying, you gotta stop this, you gotta fix it, then I would expect it to be revoked, but it's going to be up to the special magistrate and the commission on a case-by-case basis, and that, and that survives for all time, for all time, it doesn't go away until the hotel goes away. So fifty years from now, seventy-five years from now, it's there, it's not like a development agreement that has a solid term and it expires. So I think it's extremely enforceable and, and, you know, really gives the neighborhood an opportunity, not just to complain, but to enforce, which they do not have now.
Would that involve the police?
You'd have to ask the city who does their code enforcement, my understanding it's the sheriff's office, but I, I don't know that, you'd have to ask the city who does their code enforcement.
Okay, so my other question was, how many violations can revoke the license, the liquor license?
I just answered that, it's, it's, it would be subjectively up to the decision-maker if it gets to that point, hopefully it doesn't get to that point.
And if the liquor license is revoked, who enforces that?
Again, I, you'd, I, you'd have to ask the city that question, but if, if the city revokes the local zoning, the state's going to revoke the liquor license, and the state does have a special law enforcement unit just for alcohol, and they do frequent inspections, so if the city called and said this zoning got revoked, the state would probably be out the next day, making sure that there were no sales, and again, the consumption's allowed, the sales would not be allowed in that case.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're done with the cross-examination by both the commission and the affected parties, now we need to switch to the presentation by the city. So, Mr. Moore, so are you making that presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Under discussion, when considering the alcoholic beverage license application, the board of commissioners shall consider the following factors. The first one is the extent to which, the location, the extent to which the proposed alcohol beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Barefoot Beach Club has the future land use category of activity center and the zoning category of C1 John's Pass Village Activity Center. Barefoot Beach Club is in the transitional character district of the John's Pass Village Activity Center. The east side of Gulf Boulevard in the transitional character district has a mix of condo hotel and commercial uses, the west side of Gulf Boulevard for the transitional character district is a mix of tourist accommodations and residential properties. On the west side of Gulf Boulevard, commercial uses are allowed as an ancillary use, but requires the primary use of the property to either, either be a, either be a temporary lodging use or residential use. City staff using RGIS Pro and Pinellas County Property Appraiser parcel data created a map and table showing the types of uses within a three hundred feet radius of Barefoot Beach Club. The first table includes Barefoot Beach Club for the hotel and condo hotel use land area, while the second table does not include Barefoot Beach Club. The largest type of use based on the land area within three hundred feet radius is hotel and condo hotel, the second largest type of use is multifamily residential, the third largest type of use within three hundred feet radius is a, is single-family residential, the fourth largest type of use is commercial. If Barefoot Beach Club is not included in the land area of the hotel and condo hotel use, the order of the top four largest uses does change, the largest type of use becomes multifamily residential, the next largest type of use is hotel and condo hotel, the third largest use is single-family residential, and the fourth largest type of use is commercial. Only alcohol use allowed on the west side Gulf Boulevard in the transitional character district is for restaurants that meet the requirements in section one ten dash five twenty-seven of the Madeira Beach Code ordinances. The development agreement previously approved for Barefoot Beach Club stated that the restaurant use would be ancillary, ancillary and for hotel guests only. Applicants proposed alcohol use will need to meet the requirements for restaurants located in section one ten dash five twenty-seven. On the next page... On the next page is Figure 1 that has properties within three-hundred feet of Barefoot Beach Club, based on like general type of use. So we have a commercial, the hotel and condo hotel, multifamily residential, which could be anything from a condo building to a lot with multiple smaller homes on it, and a single-family residential. And the, I did two tables because I wanted to make sure to include on one of them with Barefoot Beach Club, but also show without it, since it does extend beyond the coast, or beyond the coastal construction control line. So I wanted to make sure it didn't skew the data, so that's why I ran it twice. And the second time without it, and where there was a slight change with the order of, of largest uses. The extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. The proposed alcoholic beverage license use would be ancillary to the main use of the property, which is used as a hotel. The alcoholic beverages would be sold alongside food and would only be sold to hotel guests. The proposed alcoholic beverage license use will need to meet the restaurant requirements in Section 110-527 of the Madeira Beach Code of Orances. Since the proposed alcoholic beverage license use would be for an ancillary restaurant for hotel guests, additional congestion would not be expected. The proposed alcoholic beverage license use meets the intent of the previous development agreement and would not be considered expansion of use requiring additional parking. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with a particular location for which it is proposed. This establishment is not located within three-hundred feet of a church, synagogue, temple, or a place of religious worship, public or private school operate for the instruction minors, or youth recreation community center. The transitional character district along the west side Gulf Boulevard allows for ancillary, ancillary, non-residential uses, but the primary use of the property would need to be either for temporary lodging uses or for residential uses. The neighborhood consists of multifamily, single-family condo hotels, and one standalone commercial restaurant, which is across Gulf Boulevard. Alcoholic beverage for ancillary restaurant would be compatible, since it would not be the primary use of the property. The primary use of the property would still need to be a hotel. Barefoot Beach Club is a hotel and serving food and alcohol to hotel guests only is customary of a hotel use that would be considered an ancillary use. The next one is whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety. The proposed alcoholic beverage license use would not adversely affect public safety. The proposed alcohol use is compatible with the C1 Johns Pass Village Activity Center zoning district and transitional character district. Primary use of the property is a hotel and will continue to be a hotel. At least sixty percent of the gross sales of the ancillary restaurant would need to come from food and non-alcoholic beverages. Condition, and that's a condition three of the special exception use 2025-01. In Section 110-538 of the Madeira Beach Code of Orances, establishments classified as a restaurant are required to maintain books and records reflecting the gross sale of food and non-alcoholic items and the gross sale of alcoholic beverages. They are required to provide such books and records to see within thirty days upon request. Failure to keep the books and records required in this section shall be adequate grounds for the board of commissioners to revoke the alcohol beverage zoning classification of the property upon which the business operates. And then five is no application for the review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The applicant, applicant has no outstanding fines or penalties owed to the city under any section of the code. And then under recommendations, city staff recommends approval of ABP 2025-02 with the following conditions. No amplified music, no raucous noise, Article 3 noise, and no amplification of sound, including, but not limited to, radios, stereos, karaoke machines, and televisions shall be permitted on the open rooftop. Number two, no special events, Article 2 special events, which is fifty or more people shall be permitted on the rooftop. Only hotel guests are allowed on the rooftop. The definition of hotel guests for this alcoholic beverage license request is a registered overnight hotel room occupant. The applicant must sell food, applicant must meet the restaurant definition, which is sixty percent sales from food and non-alcoholic beverages, and applicant shall only serve food and alcohol to hotel guests and cannot operate as a restaurant open to the public. The commercial uses approved in this application will continue the intent of the development agreement dated December 1st, 2015, and recorded in OR book 19105 page 1649 through 1668, and allow for open rooftop use of a sun deck, and the enclosed rooftop area to be used as a fitness room and/or a bar restaurant for hotel guests. These uses will be considered ancillary uses for the primary hotel use and shall not become primary uses of the property. Number five, any lighting used on the open rooftop must be compliant with the Madeira Beach Code of Orances, Section 110-505, lighting within the seateral conservation zone. Alcoholic beverages cannot be sold or consumed beyond the coastal construction control line on, on the beach. The board of commissioners may revoke the alcoholic beverage license if the above-mentioned conditions and safeguards and/or the conditions made part of the special exception use are violated. Attached to this memo are the local application for ABP 2025-02, the site plan, the state application, reference to Special Act 79-554 that says that hotels of fifty rooms or more can, can apply for a special motel hotel liquor license. And then I did also include the application for the special exception use SE 2025-01 and the public notice mailing and posting.
Are you asking that the agenda package be received into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Any objections from any of the affected parties or Mr. Ongst? Not seeing any?
Mr. Trask, I should have asked for the PowerPoint to be moved into evidence. It was submitted to the city prior to the hearing, and make sure the special magistrate's order was also moved into evidence as well.
So any objection to this agenda package?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Mayor, at this point, it's appropriate to receive into evidence the agenda package that was included for this agenda item, the PowerPoint presentation that was provided by the applicant as well. So it'd just be appropriate to say that it will be received. Okay, microphone. Thank you. All right, so those, those things are in evidence at this point. So now is the time for the commission to ask any questions of Mr. Morris, and then the affected parties and the applicant will have the same opportunity. Any questions of Mr. Morris by the commission?
I just have a couple. I'm, I'm pretty sure Barefoot Beach owns the property Caddy Corner from them at the formerly Lose Tattoos. Would this 4COP license allow them to sell liquor at that spot, site as well?
No, it is only on the addresses listed with this application and, and memo and public notice.
Thank you. Are there any other businesses with 4O's, 4COP licenses in place at any businesses on the west side of Gulf Boulevard?
I think Caddy's is the only one I can think of, off the top of my head. Potentially, once, the schooner is built, most likely, they, they would be applying for a liquor license also. But as of right now, the, Caddy's is the only active, I think there's a 4COP SFS.
So currently, it's just Caddy's and Caddy's is a restaurant?
Yes, yes, sir.
Are there any hotels with or without a kitchen that have a 4COP license on the, on the beach, on the Gulf, on the west side of the beach, of Gulf Boulevard?
Not currently.
Andrew, can, can you keep the microphone on and in front of you the whole time?
Okay.
It's really hard to hear you. You got such a light voice, so.
Do you want me to ask the question again?
There are not currently any, any hotel liquor licenses on, actively on the beach.
So would granting this license create precedence for other beach hotels to request a liquor license as well, even if they didn't have, with or without a kitchen?
So the, the rest of the beaches zoned R3, which has similar restrictions, like the transitional district, where the only alcohol license allowed is one for a restaurant-type use, where it would be that sixty-forty, so that limitation is up and down the beach in Madeira Beach.
Thank you. That, that's all the questions I have.
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions. Does, do the deputies have the devices to be able to meter the sound? I know that previously that was, had was brought up from events, well, not events, from, from... Amplified music, and they were not allowed to enforce it because they had no way to meter the, the sound. Do we know if, if they have those devices now? Or they would have to import those from somewhere else? I think that's what happened last time, so they couldn't even do it that, that eve, the evening. Does anyone know?
So this is questions for Mr. Morris only? It's, it's, it's not to ask questions of anybody else? This is...
I might ask Mr. Morris, does he know?
I don't, I would, I would need to ask Robin.
So the answer is you don't know the answer to the question?
I don't, I don't know the answer, related to the sheriff's department noise enforcement.
Do you recall sending any emails when, in, I guess in 2015? It's hard, it's, it's not a fair question, but ten years ago. But on the fifteen to twenty people at the limits for the bar area that was proposed on the rooftop at that time?
So in that public comment email, it's referencing the, the meeting minutes where Jack Boziak, who was at that meeting, stated that it was, it was not in the development agreement itself, but it was referenced in the meeting minutes of, of that, which, of that, the, the meeting minutes for that meeting.
Okay, so the development agreement, that, he did present that as that was his understanding of what this was for?
But it is not in the development agreement.
Right. But it's public record. So one of the recommendations is that alcoholic beverages cannot be sold or consumed beyond the coastal construction line, which is great. So I know with Caddy's, that became a very contentious restriction, that the wording, that they felt the wording allowed them to take beverages to the beach or to serve on the beach, or was that? No, that was, that was, that was being able to have seating out on the beach. Okay, I'll take that back. I'll take that back. I'm just trying to remember. But it was, it was a very, it was very contentious how it was written. They took one word out and it made all the difference. I just want to make sure we get our wording properly if this were to pass. That's all my questions at this time, I think.
Questions?
I have no further questions.
Just one quick question. Are the items that Attorney Ongst, are the, are the conditions that Attorney Ongst listed in his presentation, are they a part of the record? Have they become a part of the record?
From his presentation, I thought, I thought he said he added it to the record, and then we have the staff conditions that are attached to the, to the memo, so.
Because in your presentation, I did not see those conditions.
I mean, the conditions being approved would be the ones on the, the staff memo.
Andrew.
As long as they're a part of the condition, as, as long as those conditions are, are a part of, of, or, or system, then I'm okay with it.
Andrew, the conditions that staff presented to the magistrate, which is separate from the alcohol license, but they presented to the magistrate, the magistrate's conditions were even more than what staff had recommended? For the rooftop?
Correct. He added additional conditions that are...
Okay, so today, what we're talking about is allowing an alcohol license, and staff recommends approving that alcohol license, correct?
Correct, with the conditions, including the staff memo and from the...
Magistrate?
Magistrate, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, if there are no other questions, cross-examination. Mr. Ongst, do you have any questions for Mr. Morris?
I have just, just a few. Mr. Morris, can you give us your title, please?
My name's Andrew Morris. I'm the long-range planner in the City of Madeira Beach Community Development Department.
And it's your understanding that you're testifying as an expert for the city today, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And have all of the opinions you've stated been your expert opinion, as outlined in your report and as stated tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this use, this proposed alcohol sales use, is that a permitted use in the transitional character district of the Johns Pass Activity Center? Because this is a hotel with more than fifty rooms, is that basically what the code requires for it to be permitted use?
It requires it to be an ancillary use, but at a hotel, so, yes.
Okay, and that's why it's allowable, because it's ancillary for hotel guests only in the transitional character district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in your staff report, you explained that, under approval criteria number three, that this is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed, and you explained that because it's an ancillary, non-residential use, and it's temporary lodging, that it is an allowable use for these hotel guests only. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and in your opinion, does the approval of this with the conditions outlined, is that consistent with the intent of the development agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and... I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, you're up. Do you have any questions of Mr. Morris? Okay. Mrs. Edwards, do you have any questions of Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Loggett, do you have any questions of Mr. Morris? Okay, why don't you go right here to the podium?
Has to do, excuse me, has to do with this diagram here?
Yes, sir.
And the calculations of there, what you showed. You showed purple for, for Barefoot Beach going up to the high watermark, correct?
Correct, and that's why I ran it twice with and without Barefoot Beach Club, because I wanted to make sure to see if that was, because I, I do agree, beyond that, since it's a coastal construction control line, I, I felt like it was more fair to run it again, and that's why I had Table 2, which shows that the type of use did change a, a bit. But as, as shown, multifamily residential and, and hotel and condo hotel would still be the two largest uses for that, for that three-hundred-foot radius.
But, but my property runs up to the, the high watermark. It doesn't show that. I've got, it's on my deed.
Question, Mr. Loggett, a question?
My question is, how come the calculations to, on my property going up to the high watermark were not included in this, along with other properties?
So, so this parcel data came from the Pinellas County Property Appraiser? So I, I did not, I did not modify it, so if they did not show their parcel shape file going to that, then I, I couldn't modify it.
So you think they made a mistake on this?
I, I mean, it's accurate, I mean, they would have to discuss their, their data, because I did not create this parcel shape file, just ran, ran the calculation.
So they possibly made a mistake on this, since that'd include, again, all these properties, my understanding is that they own up to the high watermark when they vacated Gulf Avenue.
You would, you'd have to contact them directly.
Even, my, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Logue, do you have questions for Mr. Morris? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Morris. So what I'm understanding is that when you take the part, portion of Barefoot Beach out of the calculation and you reran the table, basically you're coming up with 21% are single-family residential. The other ones are multi-family residential, so it's family as well. So that's a big portion of, of the Gulf Lane area. Is that correct?
So any, any of these properties are allowed to be rented as nightly rentals too? So they're not, I, I didn't look at which properties were homesteaded and which weren't. But it, it is a mixed-use district that does have residential and temporary lodging accommodations, which, and this is why we added these additional conditions to try to mitigate and reduce the impact on the residential properties.
Okay, so basically it just kind of turned the skew around rather than show it being so big with condos and, and commercials, is what you're saying?
I mean, I mean, the multi-family calculations include anything from a property with two individual residential, single families that are on the same lot to multi-story condo buildings. Which, and those can all be rent, rented nightly also in that, in that character district.
Okay, let's pedal forward to the conditions, the terms and conditions. Because when we were having the discussion with the magistrate and specifically number two, no special events and hotel guest only, a lot of concentration was given to what was happening on the rooftop. Why is there no specific information concerning the hotel guests at the poolside?
I mean, I mean, the special events, I mean, that could be an additional condition if, if the board is interested in adding. Poolside, so relatively limited, but we, if, if the board is open to adding that as a condition to expand that, to reference special events. Most of the concern we received was related to the, the rooftop.
Well, there, I believe during the magistrate's discussion that we were having, the conversation only involved the rooftop at that point in time for the grant, that the, the grant he was giving. The approval, was that correct?
Yeah, his approval was related to just the rooftop, yes, ma'am.
Okay, correct. However, this approval is not just related to the rooftop. It's also related to the sale of alcohol across Gulf Lane at the pool location. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Would it not be prudent on our part to include the same kind of definitions for both locations?
If the board is open to that, we, we, they can add that as a condition when they vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gail, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, so we've gone through the presentation by the applicant. We've gone through the presentation by city staff. Now it's time for presentations by each one of the affected property owners. Mr. Edwards, you're up. Any presentation you would like to make?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Briefly.
State your name, please.
Tom Edwards, District One resident, affected party. Where the Barefoot Beach is originally, I'm going to give you just a short history, used to be eight to 10 cottages owned by Mr. and Mrs. Stark. They had the cottages on the west side, on the Gulf side. They tore those down and they built the existing building, the L-shaped building that's there now. Where the existing Gulf Boulevard building is, that was just a small strip store there. They had about four businesses there. And the Starks built their house where the north parking lot is, where the existing building is now. They lived on property. They were onsite managers. We didn't have noise issues. We didn't have problems. Mr. Stark wanted to go ahead and open up a package store in one of those strip areas there. The neighborhood was against that because we didn't want alcohol sales in our residential neighborhood. And the commission denied it. Then comes along Barefoot Beach, buy the property from the Starks. And they go ahead and want to do a planned development for their building on Gulf Boulevard. And when Jack Boziak was doing the presentation for the applicant, you know, he was talking about the rooftop is going to have quiet activity. You're going to have an exercise room. You're going to have yoga. There was mention of a bar, but I think I was also heard like juice bar. I didn't hear, and you, you don't see in the application, it says alcoholic bar. It says bar. So, you know, that got passed. They could, and then they also could build a restaurant there. They never built the restaurant. If, if they're in the process of making money, you would have thought that they would have finished up the restaurant and sold their food, especially if they have an alcohol license. They're going to make 60%, is going to be in non-alcoholic items and with food. That never happened. Here we are 10 years later, and now they're trying to do it. You know, the, the agreement expired when they got their CO and they, and they didn't do it. Unfortunately, when we went to this Johns Pass Activity Center in the tradition, in the traditional area, it got incorporated. We wanted that area to only go up to about 130th, 131st. We didn't want the traditional area to go all the way to 133rd. I think I sent you all a packet with the number of condominiums that are along Gulf Boulevard. Did you all receive that? There's 11 condominiums that are along Gulf Lane. And I put the number of stories they were when they were built. And, and I gave you all that, and do you need a copy of that, sir? I gave you a copy during the presentation last time.
If you have a copy for me, I'd like it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is this the same thing you gave to the magistrate?
Same thing I gave you last time.
I don't have an objection that he wants to put it in that list.
So, and then there's a 12th one at 135th. You have Seabreeze, which is a seven-story building. None of these have any rooftop activity. None of them have ever requested a restaurant. None of them have ever requested an alcoholic beverage license. This is a residential area. It's the only residential area on the beach that's west of Gulf Boulevard. So we are asking that you please not set a precedent to go ahead and grant an alcohol permit in our Gulf Lane neighborhood. One of the things that the applicant also talked about was access to the rooftop had to be by wristband. I had someone send me a video and I was going to play that tonight, but unfortunately it didn't load properly on my thumb drive. That shows within the last seven days, this person went up there, pressed the button, didn't have a wristband, went straight up to the rooftop. So what they're saying, it can only be accessed by guests with wristbands, is not necessarily true. The app, the, the type of license they're asking for, I believe that Cambria has one and the Marriott. They have restaurants there. They have 24-hour management. They don't have active 24-hour management. I took this picture the day before we had the special magistrate hearing, this would have been May 26. And it shows, you know, it's a picture of your office with the sign that says for, please arrive late, you know, call this number, we're closed, and it's hard to see down here, but it says, we open at 9:00 AM. So they don't have active management there 24 hours like the Cambria or the Marriott. And so I think that's significant when you're talking about having alcohol activities there. The hours that they're asking for are from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. They're not a restaurant. Why are they starting to serve at 9:00 AM in the morning? When they first came and asked for an alcohol permit, and this was, we're at about the third time now. When they first came, they were going to start it off at 8 o'clock in the morning until 3 o'clock the next morning, so that they had asked. And we made objections of that to the city, and then the times were reduced. So we have some serious concerns about this. One of the things that the magistrate put in his order that you couldn't have events up there with more, with less than, it had to be less than 50 people. You couldn't have more than 50 people. The city has acknowledged, I've talked to Andrew before, I've talked to city manager. How do you control that? There's no way to control it. No one's out there counting people or no one's starting to determine if they have guests. Only guests going up there. We don't know. So how are you going to regulate this? Well, you know, are you going to require them to put four cameras up there on, on the four corners of the rooftop? Are you going to have cameras in the, in the stairs to keep, to record people coming up there? So that's the only way you're going to be able to count. It'd have to be a continuous recording. And the city would have to have unfettered access to that video. So if they had a complaint, they could look at the video and count the number of people to see is there a violation of the rule, the regulation that the magistrate set in there. I mean, think about it. There are some things that the magistrate ordered that the city can't enforce. How that, you can make a complaint to code enforcement. Well, the event is probably occurring on an evening, probably on a Friday or Saturday night. Code enforcement isn't going to do anything till at least Tuesday. How are they going to get the information to see if there's a violation with the number of people that are up on the roof? So they talked about wanting to sell snacks. That tells me it's just like prepackaged food. And, you know, it would seem like they're almost putting the cart before the horse. Why didn't they create a restaurant first and show this is what we're doing? And then come back later and say, now we want to try and get alcoholic beverage? We, there, we don't know what their plan is for a restaurant and selling food and stuff like that. All, all that was said during the, this presentation and during the magistrate, we're going to sell snacks. There's a number of letters that should be in your packet that were from residents and also petitions that were signed when they first were going to do the second application, which was about a year and a half ago, and they pulled it. And, and the people were against it. There was, there's a letters in your packet that talks about Chambray, which is one of the closest condos. Is totally against having alcohol activity there. You have All Seasons, which has 1,440 owners. President of their group wrote a letter to you. They're totally against having alcohol. And that's why we're asking that you not grant this permission. Because you have the residents in the neighborhood, do not want alcoholic beverages in our residential neighborhood. It will affect the character of the neighborhood. They say that during the presentation, magistrate, that they have zero tolerance towards noise. And as, as I started to point out, and I should have done it at this presentation, is that there is noise that occurs there and it's not always zero. I mean, you hear boom boxes blasting from the balconies near the pool. You hear people yelling down from the, the condo building, building number two, down to people on the pool deck. There is noise that occurs there and there's not activity. I have a short video. I think my tech guy from the city just needs to help me make sure I get it. Yeah, it's on, which we're just going to look into. Thank you. So this is a video that one of my neighbors presented. So this truck right here, that red truck, pickup truck belongs to Aaron Huffman.
Can you pull the microphone up in front of you where we can hear you? Pull the microphone up.
I'm sorry. So the red truck up there, the pickup truck belongs to Aaron Huffman. He testified to that, that it was his truck during our magistrate hearing. So he was on, presumably on the property at the time. I'm going to skip number two, which is just kind of a continuation of this here. Loud music, noise, people screaming. You get the gist of that. I'm just going to move along here. Focus is in, it's coming up there from the sixth floor balcony. From my experience, having dealt with a lot of inebriated and people using alcohol over the years, the very strong opinion is that that probably is alcohol-related. And yet, they have testified in the magistrate hearing that they have zero tolerance, but it doesn't look like any management is on the property. This occurred, this video was taken in October 2023 by a neighbor that lives a couple of houses away. That's how wild this noise was. And there was no one that took any action. This goes on for at least 10 minutes. So it's one of the things that we're concerned about is alcohol use. And whether it's on the rooftop or on the tiki bar pool deck that they plan on doing, Gulf Lane is a family-oriented neighborhood. People walk their dogs all the time by there. You have families walk down going to the Johns Pass and back to their, with small children. They don't need to hear and see some of the activity that we believe is going to occur. I also sent you an article, it was a news article, where Jack Boziak, who happened to be the architect for this project, was denied, was doing a presentation in the City of St. Pete Beach. And they denied his application for the hotel that he was trying to do there for several reasons. But the main reason was it didn't fit the neighborhood. It was a residential neighborhood they wanted to build it in, and it didn't fit. Joan Kleben has written you two letters that were in your packet. And she, she's dealt with some noise over there significantly. She only lives two houses, three houses north of the Barefoot Beach. And back in 2020, I think it was, there was a loud party going on there. As soon as they got their permission to go ahead and stop, start operating their CO, they had this loud party up there. She made a request to an employee there to go ahead and, can, can we not have that noise? And then the, and then later talked to Aaron Huffman. And his quote was, she wanted to talk to him first before calling the police. And his response is, I'm here to make money, not friends with the neighbors. This is what we're concerned about. This is what we're concerned about. Joanne also went up there when there was a wedding event that was so loud and 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 this was not long ago, about a year ago, went up there and went right up the elevator. She didn't have an X X brake slit. She could go right up to the rooftop where the wedding was because there was no one in the office she could talk to. She was looking for some type of management person to go ahead and address the noise issue that was coming from the rooftop. They also had weddings on the beach so loud that we had to call the sheriff's office because of the noise and the and the speakers. Alcohol was flowing. They had pop up tents out there and they were having weddings and things like this. They haven't always been good neighbors and they, that's what we're concerned about with the noise and the alcohol, with the noise activity that's going to come from the use of alcohol. Joanne Claybin wrote a second letter and she she talked about that her mother always says, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. I would say now that to all of you, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. Please deny this liquor license approval. Thank you. Do they get to ask any questions or I don't know.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, so Mr. Ongs, do you have any questions?
I'll reserve, can I reserve time for the magistrate to ask their questions?
Yes, the answer is yes. And does the commission have any questions of Mr. Edwards?
Have a couple. The considerations, there's five considerations that the city has recommended that has to answer questions for. The first one, the extent to which the location, the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of these existing neighborhood. How long have you lived in that neighborhood, Mr. Edwards?
Forty-four years.
Would you say that this four C O P license would adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood?
I would. And and I forgot to point out one other thing is that if they get this license, well, first of all, let's talk about parking. They have have one parking space for every room they have. So they have 73 rooms there, 43 on one side, 30 on the other. And they used to have a couple dumpsters that occupied two spaces when they said they had 75. So if they're hiring these people, these extra employees, there's no parking provided for them.
I had one more.
Yes, sir.
Couple more questions. I requirement three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Would you agree that the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed and why or why not?
Well, that's why I tried to give the history. The neighborhood has been against the sale of alcohol anywhere west of Gulf Boulevard, along the Gulf Lanes. And the Gulf Lane runs from 129th Avenue up to 135th Avenue. We don't have any establishments there. You don't have any establishments west of Gulf Boulevard that sells alcohol except Caddies and Archibald Park. And they serve substantial amount of food there. That's why we're recommending that this not be approved when they're just going to sell snacks. They don't even have a full sized restaurant to go ahead and sell. It's not like what's being proposed with the schooner where the schooner was talking about having a whole floor as a restaurant and having alcohol there. Entirely different thing.
A couple more. I I haven't been down Gulf Lane in a few days, but I heard the recommend or the the requirement of the magistrate that the laundry truck could not park, could not unload in the alley and that they would need to move those dumpsters. Have you seen the laundry truck since that magistrate?
I have not.
Okay.
You know, they they had opportunity on on their parking lot.
How about the dumpsters? Are they still?
I think they are.
They're still in the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have, Mayor. Thank you.
I just have one quick one. You've been there a long time, Mr. Edwards. To best of your knowledge, has the deputies ever been called out due to noise?
Yes.
And if so, how many times did you say, once, twice?
When when they were having events there.
In front of the microphone, sir.
Sorry. When they were having events, and this is something else with talking about noise issue. I've called the deputies a number of times. And it also has to do with fireworks on the beach, too. So when you have these events up on the rooftop, you will have deputies come and say, you know, it's before 10 o'clock, I can't do anything. So it doesn't really help us where the the ordinance is written. And I think the magistrate, city manager was talking about, there's a section that we used to use all the time that deputies were familiar with, that if the noise was being emitted and it was could be heard plainly and loudly more than 50 feet away, you didn't have to have a noise meter, you could go ahead and take some enforcement action. Unfortunately, the deputies don't do that. We used to have our own police department here, city of Madera Beach. And but now the sheriff's office does it, but they don't enforce the ordinances as well as the local police did at the time.
Questions?
No questions.
I just have, I think, one question. In the last year, how many times have you called and reported them for a noise ordinance?
I have not. Because of the response that we get from the deputies, it's it's not past 10 o'clock. It's just like when they shoot off fireworks on the beach and I see the people going up. I might lay in bed for 10 or 15 minutes without getting up and calling the deputies. And then when I finally do and after the deputies take another 10 minutes to get there, 15 minutes, the people already left, I'll go and cancel the call so the deputies don't have to come all the way out there and find nothing. So there's times that people will call and cancel it when they realize that the neighborhood frequent, and I've talked to the neighbors, why are we going to call because we get the same response from the deputies? It's not after 10 o'clock. They're not going to do anything. That's one of the reasons why.
I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Ongs, do you have any cross examination of Mr. Edwards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Edwards, do you have anything you want to present?
My husband pretty much covered everything that I was going to say. And no, I haven't called the police. I sleep with my shutters down and I go to bed early. I use a CPAP and once I'm asleep, I'm pretty sound asleep. So I don't, I only hear noise up to maybe 10 o'clock, nine o'clock. But we did pull the police reports for service, excuse me, sheriff's reports for calls for service there. On 41725, at 9:29 PM, there was a call for service for noise. There was a disorderly conduct this year. There was an ordinance issue that was this year. There was a trespass. There was a keep the peace. Assist a citizen. There was a silver civil matter. There was a theft. Back in 5424, there was a lewd and lascivious in progress. There was a noise on 31324 at 10 PM. And there was a domestic in progress on 122324, and that was at 11:52 PM. Just because it's in the code, that doesn't mean you need to approve it. You need to think about the neighborhood and the people that live there. We live there full time. Joanne Claybin lives there full time. Bob Bello lives there full time. Our next door neighbors, Jack and Sarah Klein, they're there about five months out of the year. They come and go from their home in California. So it does make a difference for us. And I I really wish you would not allow the alcohol license because I think it is going to affect the character of our neighborhood. I think there's going to be more noise. I also don't like to call the police for the same reasons that my husband stated. By the time they get there or they see them coming, then they shut up, they go inside. Last time I called police was over, wasn't this spring break? I think it was like over maybe, well, it was this year over spring break. I had about 20 kids in my my parking lot and they were running all over the place. And, you know, I'm blinking the lights, doesn't do any good. They took off running down the lane. I have no idea if they were staying at the hotel or not. But I really wish you would not approve this and not allow alcohol in our neighborhood because I'm sure each and every one of you wouldn't want to have this in your neighborhood. You think about it. Do you want this three houses from you? You want a bar, three houses from you that serves alcohol? Stand up for us. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission?
Just just about those sheriff reports, were they all specifically for Barefoot Beach or were they the neighborhood? Like you said, those 20 kids, you weren't sure. What about the other ones?
Right. Okay, the other ones, they were all listed as 13220 Gulf Boulevard, and that's the address.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Ongs, do you have any?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Just one quick question. So do you think this rooftop would contribute to additional noise?
Yes, I do because you all know, you get to drinking alcohol, there's a bunch of you around, you're laughing, you're telling stories and you get louder. It's just a fact. You get louder, you're louder voices. So yes, I think it would affect the neighborhood.
Because, you know, all these items that you mentioned and also Tom, they're there prior to, you know, this rooftop being placed. So I I just, I'm just curious if the rooftop would actually add to all the noise and alcohol consumption that?
I I honestly think it would. Now, I don't have any problem if they wanted to put their snack bar up there to serve Cuban sandwiches that are pre-made, to serve sodas, you know, anything like that, to have activities maybe for kids that are staying there, you know? I don't have any objection to that. It's just the alcohol that I have an objection to.
So one of the conditions that Attorney Ongs presented was to be able to revoke the the license, the alcohol license. So in other words, if, would you be okay with with the rooftop? And if there is noise and there is issues, then let's say three times, I'm just going to put this out there, let's say three times in three months. If if the noise is there and then this rooftop contributes to that, let's say three, you know, three police reports in three months. Then based on the conditions that's listed here, the city can revoke this approval. Would you, would you consider that?
Oh, yes, but are you going to vote to revoke their their alcohol license once they get it?
We can't.
Are you are you going to vote?
Yes, we can if you, let's say if you have, there are three incidences in three months.
I mean, that's something you really need to think about. Are you going to vote to revoke it? Because if you're not, then.
It's a condition, it would be a condition of the approval.
Right.
If it's if it is being approved.
Right. And and there again, you go to the issue, you know, you call the police for a noise issue and you take away from other issues within the city. Do they get there? Do they turn, you know, turn the way down the noise? Do they, you know, go on back to their rooms? And then there's no, no complaint, no issue.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, hang on just a minute. Mr. Ongs, do you have any questions of this witness? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Loggett, do you have a presentation you would like to make? Okay, you've got the floor.
Hi, my name is Ron Loggett, 13231 Gulf Lane. And before I start, I'd like to wish my wife happy anniversary, number 37. And I want to thank your commissioners to let me spend it with you tonight. Thank you very much. You're going to hear a lot of people saying, don't do it, don't do it. Let me just, if I may, show you Gulf Lane from from standpoint of the houses with their full time, part time condos, with their addresses, if it's okay with you, sir.
Just to say, is what you did with the magistrate?
I don't know, I don't know where you, I don't know where you.
I don't have any problem with you showing this to them, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
You probably need to show it to Mr. Trask.
You have extra copies? All right, I only need one because I'm going to pass it down to the commission. All right, we, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No matter how you vote, somebody's going to walk away unhappy. So I'm going to make it easy for you guys, real easy. I want you to just do a yes or no T box here, and write down plus or minus, yes or no on what they want. Let me know how many individuals have said yes to it and how many have marked down how many have said no. I think you're going to have very few yeses from the neighborhood as people that want this particular approval. Okay? It's real simple. Just do the T chart. I you saw me when I questioned about the the liquor license of the sketches as to what what it really meant with for the sketch. I had a question of Andrew Morris that I sent to him. And I wanted a clarification, a definition of license premise as outlined in Florida statutes 561.0111. And exactly what that means for the sketch. I highlighted that, gave it to him. And by the way, I want to compliment Andrew for his busy this guy is and from the staff, he responded very, very fast. He forwarded that to Mr. Mr. Burke over here, Trask. And then he forwarded Mr. Trask's answer to me. And is it okay if I read your answer, Mr. Trask?
Sure.
Okay. And and I quote, Andrew, please see the definition of license premises in Florida statute 561.0111. If the application includes both parcels, the property owner may be required to obtain licenses for two locations through the Division of Alcoholic Beverages, Tobacco Division of the Department of Business and Professional Regulations. It's my opinion that the processing of the application with the city doesn't change though, so long as the application contains both parcels and the B O C can proceed. Just because the B O C approves the two locations doesn't mean the division will approve it. End of quote. I still think they need two licenses. I don't think they can serve based on that sketch up on rooftop and then serve at the bar, at the at the pool side. I think when the division comes out here and looks at it, they're going to say you need, you need a sketch of where you're going to be serving the pool side and and need a license for that. That's basically it.
Thank you. Commission, have any questions?
I have one. Same questions I asked Mr. Edwards. Would you say that this four C O P license would adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood?
Yes, especially me. I'm I'm just adjacent to that property. My property butts at.
And how long have you lived there?
I lived there in 1976, bought the property in 1981, lived there for a while. I lived there in 1976, bought the property in 1981, lived there for a while. Rose and I are married, we've lived there for a while, our youngest son grew up there. We moved to Tampa, to another location over there. I started renting it through VRBO about 13 years ago, and I've only had a few complaints from my renters, basically, problems next door, people, for some reason, arguing with them, and some were scared that they would get their cars damaged, vandalized. So I had that complaint from one that I turned into the magistrate.
But you live there now?
No, I don't live there now, no.
Okay. Would you agree that the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed?
I don't think it is compatible, it's a neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Unks, do you have any questions for this witness?
Yes, sir, I do. Do you want me to use the microphone?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I'm not sure if it's on still.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Loggett, thank you for being here. I'm sorry you're here on your anniversary, I'm sorry you're spending it with us, but I do...
Save me money.
You're gonna owe her after. I appreciate you being here. Just have a couple brief questions. I think you kind of answered it for Commissioner Taglinari. You do not live at the property next door to the Barefoot Beach Hotel currently, do you?
No.
And when was the last time you resided there full-time?
It was 35 years ago.
Okay.
Based on my son was born, my youngest son was born.
What's your primary address right now?
19905 Reading Road, Lutes, Florida.
In Lutes, Florida?
Yes.
Okay. And you rent your property out, full-time, is that correct?
Yes.
To renters?
To renters, to VRBO.
Do you allow them to drink alcohol on your property?
Pardon?
Do you allow them to drink alcohol on your property?
Yes.
Are you aware that anybody from Barefoot Beach has ever complained about noise or issues with your renters?
Not to me.
Okay. Final question, your house was substantially damaged, is that correct?
Very.
It has to be torn down?
Don't know yet.
Okay, but there's nobody renting right now, is that right?
Nobody renting right now. I stopped renting right after the hurricane.
And it's not occupiable?
Yes, it is occupiable. Upstairs, upstairs is.
Upstairs is, but you're not renting it currently?
No, my son's presently going in and out there and helping us out with it.
All right, I'm sorry to hear that about your house.
Thank you.
And sincerely happy anniversary, I'm sorry you're here with us, and I'm just doing my job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rose, it's your opportunity.
Well, thank you for joining us.
If you could state your name, please.
All right, can you hear me now?
Your name, please.
My name is Rose Loggett, live at 13231 Gulf Lane is our property, and we currently live in Lutes. We've been there since 76, and we've lived on and off. So I had the lake, he had the beach, so we were back and forth, and then a few years ago, we started VRBO-ing it, but we spent a lot of our time at our lake, at the beach There's three of us in a row. The Edwards is on the corner, they've been there since 78. The people next door to us that could not be here tonight were the Kleins, Sarah and Jack Klein, or John Klein. And Sarah is actually the daughter of the former owners of the elk, the kingfish and the elk capitan fishing boats, Merle and RJ Burrows. So we've got a lot of history. The people next door to us were the Starks, they lived at the hotel, they had little cottages. It was a small community. And we've gone through this change in Madeira Beach. But the Gulf Lane community is a small, little residential community, primarily residential, quiet area, that is quite different from anywhere else on the Boulevard. The lane is, we differentiate the lane from the Boulevard. The Boulevard is a commercial thoroughfare, right? We all know that, and there's all kind of businesses. But in the part that involves 135th to 129th, there is no businesses like alcohol serving and things like that, party hearty. It's more of a residential, old Florida community. There was a time ago when Madeira Beach decided that we were going to be a small fishing village. We're not Madeira Beach, I mean, we're not Miami Beach, we're not Treasure Island, nor are we St. Pete Beach or Clearwater. Even if you walk into the office over there and look at the pictures on the wall, do you see any big hotels, any foo-foo stuff like South Beach? No, you see a lot of fishing vessels, small, old town. What brings people to that part of Madeira Beach is they don't want this big party atmosphere, they want the beach. They want a quiet area, they can walk their dogs, they can enjoy a little bit of old Florida. This is a jewel, and we come in front of this board, and we ask the commission, and we ask over and over again, please retain the ambiance, the character of this small, little jewel that we have in Madeira Beach. We've got hotels going up, and you can see some of the mistakes that were made. If you come down John Stewart Highway, or Tom Stewart Highway, and you go into, what do you see? What do you see when you get to the Boulevard? You weren't supposed to see the entrance to parking garages, you were supposed to see the beach, but that's not what happened. They made a big mistake, so then they turned it into going into Archibald Park. Well, the bar, the snack bar, was skewed to the south, and guess what you saw? The beach. But now what do you see? You come down Madeira Way, and there in front of you is the snack bar. I mean, we've changed a lot of things, there's mistakes, but there's little jewels. The candy kitchen is a little jewel. You know, Dockside Dave's used to be across from us, and we used to be able to see, oh, it's not busy now, and make our way over it. We walk our dogs up and down the, you know, the lane, and you don't see people walking around with beer and drinking, you see families walking their dogs, going to and from the beach. You want to party, where do you go? It's only a few blocks away. You've got it, right there at the Bambi Beer Gardens, okay? And you've got all the restaurants that are up there. Why do we need to take this little piece of paradise and pave it? You know, pave it by putting in something that's selling alcohol. It's a slippery slope. You ask about, about, we could, you know, we could revoke their licenses. How hard is it when you give somebody something to take it back? We would be up here having meeting after meeting after meeting, every time that would happen. I don't see that happening. We have to make a decision. You also saw the magistrate, we were talking about restaurant up at the bar, up at the top of the building, serving alcohol. All of a sudden now, we're down at the beach side, and I brought it up during that meeting. We were told, we're gonna take orders from over there, we're gonna deliver it to the beach. Well, you got a thoroughfare, a public road in between. Yes, they were granted contiguous status for the purpose of density. They are not contiguous. There is a roadway, they are bifurcated by a public road. Yes, we have skin in the game. We've been here for a long time. Barefoot came in, we thought they were gonna be great partners, you know, and do something, and they went up with five-over parking. And then it became with the rooftop thing, okay? They skewed it in front of the houses over here, because you can make more money, because you could see the beach better, instead of putting it in front of their building. Well, we went to bat on that, and so now they're here. It was only a matter of time that something else was gonna change. We know what profit and loss is, we're not stupid people, we've been around for a long time. We know the objective is to make more money, but we want to do it with the neighborhood in mind. How is this going to change the little jewel that we call Gulf Lane? You know, they even called it an alley. I don't know how many meetings that we were in, and they were saying, "The alley." Well, Ron said, "I don't know how many of you have an alley that has addresses." You know, they wanted people to think about it. We had commissioners that didn't even know it existed, and when they came down there, they went, "Wow, this is old Florida. We've already taken a hit." As you know, we're sitting there, we did a great job with the house, we got all this hardy board stuff, we got, you know, those big storm windows, it was awesome. We were already three feet off the ground, the house was built in 1928, it never flooded. Well, guess what? You know those big, beautiful dunes out there? Well, they came underneath our house and shifted us off our piers, you know? And through the great deal with FEMA, well, now it's gonna cost you at least $78,000 to just level it, and we're gonna take your half of your 50% that we appraise it, and then defer, I mean, depreciate it, and guess what? How much can you sink into making the repairs? So we are still in the process of deciding which way to go. Yep, it's about 250 to bring it up, and that's bringing up this structure, so what are we gonna do? We want to stay on the beach, we don't want to sell our property. I know Aaron wants to buy it, but we don't want to sell it, so we want to stay. Our kids grew up, the fact that we didn't, we weren't living here 100% of the time, we were here all the time. We both traveled internationally, the last thing we wanted to do was get on a plane and go somewhere. This was our respite here, this was our refuge. We were here every weekend. And then we finally, when the boys grew up, and they went here and there, and all kinds of stuff, you know, we decided, well, let's just VRBO it. But how much time do we spend here? Every chance that it wasn't rented, we were here. So we spent a lot of time here. And yes, there's a lot of noise going on next door, but it's a slippery slope. We're talking about a restaurant up at the top of the building, that's Gulf Boulevard building, now we're talking about booze being sold at the poolside, where do we go from here? We're asking you to, once and for all, consider the residents. If you're going to give them something, give them the restaurant up at the top, but nothing, no sales at the pool. Don't go across the road with the alcohol. These are two premises, they have one address that they use as their mailing address, but it doesn't mean they're not on Gulf Lane. That building is on Gulf Lane, Gulf Lane is a public road, they are on Gulf Boulevard. So in order for them to happily coexist with what Gulf Lane does, that neighborhood, then they need to give up something. You know, they're making money, they built their six-over, I mean, five-over parking, you know, and the neighborhood didn't want that, but we've been burdened with it, if you will. It's a cute little hotel, it's great, it's not a monstrosity, but where do we draw the line? So I'm asking you to consider not giving permission for the full request. Thank you.
Hang on a second. Any questions for this witness?
Yes, I got married when I was 15, no.
I got that. No questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Darn.
Mr. Unks, do you have any questions? Okay, no questions.
I do have one question. Did you say if there is no sales of alcohol at the pool, you'd be fine?
I'm saying that I would be fine if they adhered to these rules, but if you noticed in the, in the conditions that I brought up before, they did all of the, on number two. It says, "This is gonna happen over there, no party events and hotel guest only," but they did nothing for what was gonna happen over the beach, over at the pool. Who's gonna police who's who? You know, who's gonna wear a wristband when you're swimming in the pool? Who's gonna find out if they're a guest? So we've done nothing. So I'm saying, there's no way that you're gonna meet those conditions all the time.
Well, you know, what I really envision, and I know...
No, we're not gonna do that. If you have a question, cross-examination question, you can ask that, but please don't make a presentation as to your position before the case is even totally presented to you, okay?
I wasn't going to make a presentation.
Okay, well, it sounded like you were gonna give your con...
I'll stop, I'll stop right there, so, thank you.
I'm trying to protect my commission.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, so, Mr. Edwards, step to the front. Do you have a question of this witness? No, we're not, you're not gonna make any more presentations, you've made your presentation. All right, perfect, thank you.
You gotta have somebody in the crowd keeping us straight, you know?
Okay, so, Mr. Edwards is submitting into evidence, the video, any objection? Okay, so, will you receive that into evidence?
Yes, we'll receive that into evidence.
All right, thank you, you're done. All right, so everybody has made a presentation. Now we're at the stage where if there's any public comment about this application, now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Okay, sir, you have not been sworn in, if you step up, step forward, I'll go ahead and swear you in. Mr. Baggins, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give today is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, the nugget truth?
I do.
Okay, state your name then, and tell the commissioner.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner is Jeff Baggins, 429 Boca Seaga Drive, down the street. I'm, being a neighbor, I'm kind of bummed it's not open to the public, but what I'm speaking of is from a real estate property rights standpoint, right? These guys own a hotel, they've got it approved years ago, and they're only asking to serve to their guests. That's it. And a lot of the testimony against, I was listening on my way here, and I heard it from the last one, is, I think to be taken with a little grain of salt, right? The argument of it's a quaint neighborhood that's being destroyed is not true, because they don't live there. They're commercial ventures, they're their Airbnb rental homes, right? And it's not true. I understand the painting, the reason for painting it that way, but it's not true. So they're commercial properties, being rented out, with the exception of one or maybe two neighbors, but the vast majority are Airbnb's, VRBOs. And I think to kind of put a restriction on somebody's personal property, that he's only trying to serve his own guests, is a big overreach. And I think you guys should just look at from a constitutional property rights standpoint, they're just trying to serve their guests. So I advise you guys to vote yes, I think it's only the right thing to do.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Baggins? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so now we've completed the entire process, mayor. So my suggestion is, is we, well, first of all, Mr. Unks, do you have any closing argument that you want to make? Sorry, there was one more step.
Yes, I do, but unlike the last hearing where I kind of went a little early, I want to make sure I get the last word, so I want to provide rebuttal and closing at the end. If there's any other presentations, I'd like that to go first, so I don't have to get up twice, just in the interest of time.
I think everybody else has made their presentation, they've made that known, they're all shaking their head yes, so you're gonna get the final word.
Okay, if that's now, then that's great, and I'm happy to do that.
That's now, okay.
Appreciate all of your patience tonight. This process was a little less lengthy than the special magistrate, that one went five and a half hours, so I think we'll get out of here a little earlier than that. I don't want to get into a tit-for-tat, you know, about everything you've heard, but you heard a lot, you heard a lot from the property owners that, some, four property owners, actually, it's just two properties, two properties owners that received notice, and so I'm gonna address some of it, but if we could put the applicant PowerPoint back on and go to the conditions of approval, I want to just get right to the heart of the matter, which Commissioner Guevara was getting at. We are fine adopting all of the exact same conditions that the magistrate adopted, so that way, the conditions that were adopted by the magistrate are uniform with the conditions in the council, in the commission's approval, and I think that, I think they should be uniform, other than the magistrate can revoke his, and you can revoke yours, change that out. We are also fine with making all the conditions reciprocal between the pool and the roof. So no amplified noise at the pool, no hotel guests only at the pool, and again, you're gonna hear from, they're gonna get the last word, Mr. and Mrs. Huffman, you have to have a wristband to go to the pool, okay? So we're fine making those reciprocal. I do not want to overly complicate the conditions. As you can tell, there are a few neighbors who do not want a hotel there, they never wanted it there, and that's really what this is about, right? They're not gonna be happy, no matter what you do tonight, because the hotel's still gonna be there, and people are still gonna be allowed to drink alcohol there, whether they buy it there or not. The magistrate... The magistrate received into evidence, police reports that Mr. Edwards provided from 2020 to 2023, only eight of those were noise-related. The magistrate put that on the record when he made his oral pronouncement. He said the vast majority of these don't have anything to do with noise. And he also noted that he didn't get any reports from 2024, 2025. And Mr. Edwards admitted he hasn't made any reports since 2025. Mr. Edwards has also never once contacted the Huffman's. Not one time has he ever contacted the Huffman's directly. I think you may have had a neighborhood meeting that you probably interacted at, but he's never called them to complain. He's never sent them an email directly. So it goes both ways. You have to, you have to work together to work through problems. And if you're just going to complain and you're not going to give someone a chance, the other thing I wanted to point out that, you know, I'm not your lawyer, Mr. Trask will advise you on the law. I'm their lawyer, and I'm going to tell you my position on it, just like I did with the magistrate. The magistrate asked us, do you have any case law for me to consider? And I do, and it's called Catherine Bay versus Fagan. It's a 52 Southern Third at 19, District Court of Appeal, First District, from December 14, 2010. And it's about quasi-judicial land use hearings, and it's about what's competent substantial evidence. Okay? The case law is very clear. The staff report is competent substantial evidence. Your expert has testified that we meet all five approval criteria. You have heard no countervailing expert testimony. You've heard no expert that has Mr. Morris's qualifications as a long-range planner employed by the city, AICP certified, that says it doesn't fit the character of the transitional district of the Johns Pass Village Activity Center. Because it does. It's specifically allowed. It's specifically allowed for a hotel that serves 60% food and non-alcoholic beverage. It's in the code. That's probably why Ms. Edwards said just because it's in the code doesn't mean you should approve it. Well, actually, if we meet the burden of proof, you have to, because it's a quasi-judicial hearing. It doesn't really matter if you personally don't like it. If we meet the approval criteria by the burden of the evidence, and all we needed to do that, I didn't have to say a word. All we needed to do that was have Mr. Morris give his presentation. And the case law is clear, that alone is competent substantial evidence. The application itself is also competent substantial evidence. And the Catherine Bay versus Fagan case law says, lay witnesses' speculation about potential traffic problems, light and noise pollution, and general unfavorable impacts of a proposed land use are not considered competent substantial evidence. Similarly, lay witnesses' opinions that a proposed land use will devalue homes in the area are insufficient to support a finding that such devaluation will occur. And I, it is, I think it's important to note, some of you may have watched it or part of it, the Edwards were represented by an attorney at the magistrate hearing. And the magistrate still found that the competent substantial evidence weighed in favor of the city recommendation, with the conditions that he added to, and with the conditions that we're asking you to adopt tonight, that he adopted, and also make reciprocal to the pool. I do not want to get overly complicated on the conditions that make it impossible for you to enforce. A police report alone does not prove a crime occurred. People make police reports all the time that are unsubstantiated and don't result in, in enforcement activity. So we can't just say, well, if there's three police reports in a month, that's, that's revocation. That, that does not work. That's not going to be workable. So we can't, we can't do that. I think these conditions were crafted with a very sincere desire to meet the compatibility criteria. If we didn't have these conditions, the staff wouldn't be recommending approval, and the magistrate probably wouldn't have supported it. That should be enough, I believe, for you to be comfortable, that not only can you revoke it, but so can the magistrate. And again, none of that's in place right now. There's no limitation on events. There's no limitation on non-hotel guests on the roof. There's no limitation on non-hotel guests at the pool. There's no limitation on anything right now outside of your general noise ordinance. Okay? So again, there have been very, very, very few noise complaints that were actually presented to the magistrate, and he took that into consideration. You didn't get a list of complaints tonight. Someone read you a list that they read and represented was an accurate list, but that's not evidence, that's anecdotal evidence. That's not relevant competent substantial evidence, as would be required by a quasi-judicial hearing. I really don't want to get into a tit for tat on the dumpster and all this other stuff. But I will tell you, I have emails that I've provided to Mr. Trask from Megan Webber, the Public Works Director, who's basically saying, why are you moving it? I want it where it is. And it was explained because the magistrate said we needed to enclose it. So it was moved out there because the city asked for it to be placed there. They didn't move it out there to annoy the neighbors, or, or to, you know, offend anybody, or to do something nefarious. It was moved out because the city asked it to be moved out. They've already applied for a permit to install the enclosure, and that's a condition. So they won't even be able to serve alcohol until it's enclosed. So if it doesn't get enclosed for a year, no alcohol service. I mean, that's an objective thing that you will be able to verify with a permit from your city. Again, I don't want to belabor it. You've heard quite a bit. I would encourage you to adopt the, the staff recommendation of approval with the special magistrate's conditions and reciprocal to the pool, and, and really not to add anything else. I think covering the pool and covering all of his conditions and making it revocable by you, and you know what? There might be a one-time occurrence that's so bad that you say, it should be revoked. So I wouldn't encourage you to do some three in a month or whatever, because I think it should just be, if it gets to you, you have every right to either do it or not do it at a hearing. Mr. and Mrs. Huffman, you're going to get the last word.
Hello. First, thank you all for being here. I know it's a long night. I did make some notes, but I'll just speak from the heart. So at the special magistrate meeting, I explained that our kids have grown up at Barefoot. Yes, it is a business. Obviously, we have a business plan. But our plan also, when we have family talks over Thanksgiving and Christmas every day, is for this to be a lasting legacy for our kids, a place for them to continue to grow. And if you were to ask my nine-year-old, who I would not let him come tonight, because it's past his bedtime, what he wants to be when he grows up, he wants to be the manager of Barefoot Beach Club, and he wants his kids to be the manager someday, too. This is our backyard, too, and I want harmony for all of the neighbors. A lot of people call us needing jobs, because their jobs were destroyed during the hurricane. I want to help the community and provide that. I want to do it in a safe way, that I can keep my children growing up at Barefoot, and maybe one day my grandchildren. That's all that I have to say.
Thank you. I won't belabor it. I think you've heard it all, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right, so it's time to close the public hearing. Mayor, the appropriate thing to do would be to have an affirmative motion to approve the application with whatever conditions is appropriate, and then vote it up or down. So.
So are, are we going to hear the five of us have a discussion?
After the motion is made.
After the motion? Okay.
Discuss the motion.
Do we have a motion?
May I say something before you do?
No, we need a motion on the floor, then, then discussion.
I make a motion to approve ABP 2025-02 Barefoot Beach Resort.
Second.
Okay, so with the staff recommendations, is that the motion? Okay, which had conditions. I just want to make sure I know what the motion is. You want to approve it based upon the recommendation that staff has made with all these conditions that are listed on page? Sorry, let me get to the page. Starting on page 295 and on 296.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And there was a second?
Yes.
Okay. So those conditions do not include a reference to the special magistrate's order. It only includes the conditions the staff has suggested. That's the motion for discussion.
Okay. Do you want to start?
No.
Nope. Ray?
It does not include the pool area. It does not include common areas. It does not include the special magistrate conditions. I mean, if we're going to vote on this, that motion doesn't include any of those. So that would be my biggest concern.
So the motion does include the entire park property. It does not make a distinction between one room or another, what floor or another, one building or another. It's the entire property included in the application.
It calls out the rooftop. Only hotel guests are allowed on the rooftop. The lawyer, sorry, I forgot your name.
Mr. Unks.
Mr. Unks even suggested that the pool could be added, but the motion does not consider
So that specific reference, condition number two, was with regard to special events. So are, so are you suggesting to the maker of the motion that, that the motion be amended to include no special events at the pool area?
I would suggest that for no amplified music, for all the conditions for the, the pool area, the common areas, the, the pool area, the, the rooftop. I'm not talking about individual guest rooms, I'm talking about common areas.
So the conversation about having, because we're voting on an alcohol license, we're not voting on the, what the magistrate approved, the events. We are only voting on alcohol. And I think that the recommendation of having the conditions of the alcohol license match the conditions that the magistrate set, so that all the conditions are the same, is, is that what you're saying, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, to take the magistrate's? Because the magistrate has stricter, more recommendations than staff. And it would make the alcohol license match the event approval from the magistrate, so they'd all be the same.
But again, the staff's recommendations and the magistrate are referencing the rooftop, not the pool area, not other common areas. So, you know, I don't want to get in a position like we did with removing one word from caddies, which they were allowed to circumvent the, the intent of the written word, and they could, they could basically, they could put out chairs. It didn't have to do with the alcohol on the beach. So I just want to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's crossed, and it doesn't, doesn't cover that. It only covers the rooftop. Special events down at the pool area doesn't mention that.
I might have misunderstood. I didn't think they needed a license to hold special events at the pool area.
But again, it's, you're having an alcohol, you're serving alcohol, and that's the whole point of the alcohol license. I mean, we're, we're having conditions, but the conditions aren't, aren't, aren't all-inclusive.
You just want to add that all the conditions that apply to the rooftop also apply to the pool? Is that what you want? I would agree with that.
I would say common areas.
Right.
I mean, the pool, gathering areas, how about that? Gathering space.
We got a motion on the floor.
I think that, I think that's the intent of the recommendation, is the gathering areas. I, I don't know. I mean, that's the way I'm interpreting it.
So we can address that very quickly by adding the words "or poolside" every time it mentions rooftop. So first condition, on the open rooftop or poolside. The second condition, permitted on the rooftop or poolside. Those are the two places that the roof is, rooftop is mentioned. Would that solve your concerns, Vice Mayor?
I guess it would.
Okay.
I concur.
Good point. So Commissioner, as the maker of the motion, are you willing to amend your motion to include that additional language? Condition number one, after the word, words, the open rooftop, to add the words "or poolside", and the same on condition number two?
Yes.
Okay. And that's still good to make a motion?
Yes.
Second? Okay. All right. So you've got an amended motion on the floor?
So I have some comments I'd just like to make. Does anyone else, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No.
Do you want to go first? I don't mind. I don't mind.
You go.
Okay. So I wanted to just address a few, address a few of the items that were brought up here tonight by the community. And I, I personally feel like they built the hotel, the hotel is there. It didn't appear to me that we have a lot of complaints, although there are some complaints. So what positives that I took away from the information, or how I see the information, is number one, it's guests only. And I agree with Mr. Baggins, who said, I'd love it if it was open to the public for my own personal use, but it's not. And I think that for the purposes of where the hotel is and what they're doing, guest only is, is a positive. As far as no one being there on property, if there's, one of the benefits to letting them serve alcohol is if there is a bartender there, there's a person there. There's a person there to be a part of any shenanigans. There's a person to be there for loud music. There's a person to be there to address that. Currently, they don't have that. So currently, if you go stay at the Barefoot, and I stay at, I stay at hotels, and when I stay at hotels, I bring my own alcohol. Most hotels serve alcohol, or most hotels have a snack area, and they serve beer and wine, or not serve it, but you can buy it. So I think having a bartender there is a greater benefit to the community surrounding the hotel than just letting them, telling them, no, you can't have alcohol, and the people who come there are going to bring their own alcohol and be whatever, and there's You can't regulate people sitting by the pool with their own alcohol. You can regulate people sitting by the pool if you're serving their alcohol. You can say, you've had too much, I'm not going to serve you. You can say, you can have one more, or you can say, you have to go, because you're being inappropriate. That's the benefit from having anyone serving, whether it's poolside or on the rooftop. I do agree with the same conditions as the magistrate. I think that they've put forth a good faith effort in already starting to comply with the issues that they had. I feel like, although just because you can doesn't mean you should, they have met all of the criteria, and they have the legal right to have the beer and wine license. And we sit in a unique position that if they break the rules, we can take it away. We can vote. If they can't follow the rules and they can't adhere, we can take it away. And if we don't, if we don't do it, the magistrate can. So there's two, for the community, there's two people or two groups, us and the magistrate, that can take it away if we, if we need to. So I feel like, I understand that the residents that live full-time don't want to see alcohol. I see giving the license as an opportunity to regulate the alcohol, as opposed to anyone just bringing their alcohol there and behaving in whatever manner they choose. And for the, the walking across the street, people can walk across the street with alcohol right now. Once they have an alcohol license, they are held to a much higher standard, because they will come in, and if they get caught, if you get caught having a person walk from one building to the other with alcohol in their hand, we won't have to pull their license, the state will. You can't do that. So I think that there's a benefit for giving the license. That's an unforeseen benefit, in, in my opinion.
I have three sticking points with approving this. The first is one of the, the factors that are required, to the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcohol beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. I, I understand that our expert has said that it does qualify, but I think it's a very, I think it's a subjective question. And I've heard a lot of evidence from longtime residents who, in their way, are experts. And I've heard a lot of evidence from longtime residents who, in their way, are experts on the character of the existing neighborhood, who say that it would. The third item is whether or not the proposed use is compatible with a particular location for which it is proposed. Again, our neighborhood experts, people who have lived there for many, many years, they say that it's a hotel, it's in the middle of a, it's an island in the middle of residential properties. My last sticking point is that they're saying they're going to have a kitchen, but they, I mean, a restaurant, but they don't have a kitchen. And I question how they will maintain the 60/40 ratio of food to alcohol.
Before you jump on, Vice Mayor, I need to go over what the law is with regard to the statements made by the residents. There are two cases that specifically provide, that statements by local residents of their opinions and desires in opposition to the proposal here today are not competent substantial evidence. That's the case of Pollard versus Palm County. There is also another case called City of Apopka versus Orange County that holds the same, have the same holding. Those statements are of their opinions and desires in opposition to the proposal are not competent substantial evidence. You are not to consider those as competent substantial evidence. Also, the case of Catherine's Bay LLC versus Fagan, the case that was referenced by, by the attorney. Lay opinion testimony on matters requiring expertise, like traffic problems, increased light, and noise pollution, or compatibility with the surrounding development, is not competent substantial evidence. That case has been in existence for 15 years. And also, bring your attention to this Pollard versus Palm Beach, that case has been in existence for 35 years. And again, the City of Apopka versus Orange County, that's been in existence for over 50 years. So those statements made by the residents on their opinions are not competent substantial evidence. And you remember, when I read you the quasi-judicial process procedures, you only are to consider competent substantial evidence. So I just wanted you to make sure, when you're voting, that you follow the law.
That was going to be my question to you, Attorney Trask, given the, given the testimony and given everything that we've seen here, do we have a choice on voting this up or down?
You have a choice to determine whether the five criteria were met based upon the testimony and evidence that you've received. So I'm just telling you that you can't give the greater weight of evidence to the residents that have spoken tonight, because even though their information that they provided is important, it is not competent substantial evidence.
So the law is on the side of the alcohol applicant?
Well, you've had your own expert, and the only expert who has testified tonight is Mr. Morris. And I would tell you that the applicant did not need to put on a case at all. It could have relied upon Mr. Morris's testimony, and that would have been sufficient.
Comments?
Ready to vote.
Commissioners, Vice Mayor?
I'm reading.
You ready?
I'm reading over the five criteria once again.
Okay.
I don't want to hold things up.
No, by all means. I can call for the city clerk. City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
No.
Commissioner Tangerini?
No.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried, three to two.
Mayor, can we take a five-minute break? We've been going almost four hours.
Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. It is 9:42, and we're back in session. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. With no unfinished business, we will move to contracts and agreements. First is master agreement UF Task Order 08 Impact Fees. And we'll hand this to Mrs. Silver.
Thank you. So this is the contract agreement between the University of Florida to retain Mr. Murphy, who we have here tonight, to look into the impact fees as we discussed at the BOC workshop. I also included in the packet some numbers of elevation and new single-family home permits that have been issued. That is on page 479. Go to that on the screen. Just so you can see the difference of, this is the building permit fee that was reduced from 2% to 1%, and then with the impact fees that were collected on each of these projects. And see, we have three new home projects and three elevation. Two of the elevations had no impact fees. This last elevation project was enclosing the garage, as we talked about in our last BOC workshop. So that kind of gives you an idea of what that looks like, what that fee is, if you enclose the garage and elevate it. And then these were new buildings completely. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Murphy, if he would like to say anything.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, Jerry Murphy, University of Florida, for the record. I want to give you guys a little more background than the last time I was here, but I will not belabor you more than the 50 slides that we're going to show on the PowerPoint presentation. So back in 2019, the city entered into a master research agreement with the University of Florida. And that puts us in a situation, because the university is a state organization, we're not covered under the CCNA, we're exempt from that. And so you have a direct agreement with us, you don't have to go out for requests for proposals or requests for information. You can just call us up and say, "Hey, can you help us out?" And if we can, we will, and if we can't, we don't. And so, as you can see from the packet, if approved, this would be our eighth task order under that master research agreement. Probably the largest of the task orders in the past has been the impact fees, because it involved amendments to your comprehensive plan, establishment of levels of service, then an entire ordinance, multiple hearings, working with the LPA Planning and Zoning Commission. And so now we were contacted, basically, to talk about what we might do with the impact fees in terms of where we are. So that's sort of the background context for our relationship. And then the background context for reexamining the proportionate share development fees, or the impact fees, is contained in Chapter 92 of the Code of Ordinances. And the relevant provisions to our current discussion are Sections 92-65, provides that you, the BOC, will review the fee schedule for the impact fees on an annual basis. And it's great that you're talking about that now, because you're in budget, and that's what it's all about, is money. And that's done on a general, generally, on an annual basis in conjunction with that budget process. Then Section 92-66 provides that unless otherwise directed by the BOCC, by you guys, the schedule will be adjusted in May based on the methodology that's in the reports that are referenced in Section 92-67, and that are in turn based on the levels of service adopted in your comprehensive plan. And so within those reports are some colorful tables, and I think Jenny can maybe tell you what page those are listed on in your packet. But those are the tables that are used to calculate the fees. And that basically was a snapshot that was taken in 2019, and that basis changes over time as the city either acquires, or eliminates, or retires assets, and that has not been updated now in six years. So it's certainly reasonable to take a new look, including whether or not it is reasonable and legally defensible to make certain accommodations for elevating structures out of the floodplain, thereby potentially improving the city's health, safety, and welfare. I don't know the answer to any of those questions regarding assets or floodplain development or legal defensibility, because we haven't researched them. And what you have with us is a master research agreement. So our understanding at UF, when we drafted the task order that you have on page 388 of your packet, was that the city wanted to reexamine the proportionate share development fees in light of the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. So that task order, if you'll reference it, is just a draft for discussion. And we don't usually have the discussion and negotiation of that in a public forum. In the past, basically, that's been done with staff, and we bring it forward to you. We just have brought forward the draft that we submitted. So you're certainly able to make changes to that. One of the things you might want to think about is our assistance in coordinating with Pinellas County for the city as they discuss their mobility fee adoption. Another is perhaps updating the report, because the information is six years old, and things have changed. In fact, the report did not include, as I recall, and I'm pretty certain, the new hotel, which names escapes me, Cambria. You know, so that's a whole basis that is not included in the current report, and may be something that you would like to consider. I do want to point out, on the tables that Jenny mentioned, your permit fees are percentage fees based on the cost of construction. Your impact fees do not have that same basis. They're based on the square footage of the improvement. And so it's an entirely different calculation, just so that's not confusing. The other thing that the task order mentions is planning officials' training. That's something that I think is very beneficial, and we have not done that since 2019. And that's something that can be open to the entire public, particularly to the new Commissioners, if they're interested. But your planning and zoning commission are the ones that mostly benefit from that, because they're your sort of sounding board for anything that happens to the comprehensive plan or your land development regulations. And that's basically all I have to say. I'm happy to answer any questions and get you out of here.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioners, questions or comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. So the last time we spoke, we talked about being able to offer a 500-square-foot allowance so that people elevating their home would not be charged an impact fee if they finished off their garage. Two of the elevations don't have any, I'm assuming, you have to assume they're not going to finish their garage, or they'll do it later and then have the impact fee. But they're not going to do, as part of their elevation permit, they've not done that. Would we have to do this study, pay $30,000 and wait a year before we were able to do that? Or could we just, we could just vote to offer that 500-square-foot allowance?
Well, you, as a commission, can do a lot of things that I can't advise you about. I would not advise you to do that.
Okay.
Because I don't think that's provided for in your comprehensive plan. I think you would need to amend your comprehensive plan to provide for that, and then your land development code, or not your land development code, it would be your Code of Ordinances to address that. I don't think you can suaspente off the top of the board, make a decision like that, but you know, you guys, you guys vote, and you do what you do, and the dice fall where they may.
I don't know either, but you know, due to the disaster, we've done a lot of things. So I, I mean, I see it as, you know, you read the report here, and it, staff wants to keep, keep this funding source, because it can be used generally, it can be used anywhere. Is that correct?
It can be used on specific projects within the capital improvement plan. So we have one fee for culture and recs, so that's like parks. We have one that's transportation, mobility.
Basically anywhere.
And then we have one that's safety, so something, say, with the fire department.
Be anywhere in the city, including the parks, and, you know, two in the pocket parks and whatnot.
Yes, so we're actually looking at using a portion of the culture and rec fees that we have collected into those pocket parks.
But we can't use the building permit fees.
That's correct. The building permit fees go into the building fund, and that is very specific on what you can use it for.
Very restricted.
Yes.
Which is why we voted to decrease it from 2% to 1%, is because we're going to have building fees, permit fees, that we'll never be able to spend.
So in your packet, and I provided a copy of just some more examples of the reduction in that permit fee, because it was 2%. It was reduced, I believe, in November to 1%. So just what that difference looks like, and then the impact, so those permit fees go to the building fund, and then you have the impact fees, and then that is within three different funds. So you have one, the bulk of it goes to parks, culture and rec, and then you have the transportation, and then you have safety, which is like fire.
I mean, I'm torn. I don't, you know how I feel, on the impact fees. The few are paying for what the many enjoy. I think that's totally wrong. I also see being that the building permit fees are so restrictive, I mean, if we're going to do a pocket park, I think everyone enjoys it, everyone, including condo owners, should participate in that. Is there any other reason, other than me bringing this up, as the impact fees being an issue, that we would need to review and authorize this $30,000 expense that's going to not really come to fruition until sometime next year, this time next year?
Well, if I may, let me explain. You know, the reason that we put that next-year date on there, and I thought I explained this last time, was we don't know if there's going to be a heavy hurricane season, or something's going to be delayed, so that provides a cushion in case there is. I don't believe it will take that long, but I can't foresee the weather.
But you didn't answer my question. What other benefits, other than me raising the issue about wanting to provide an allowance, or reduce the impact fees, or eliminate the impact fees from the residential, strictly doing it on an impact, building a new condo, building a new hotel, building a commercial structure, something that's going to bring a lot of beds to the area, which is going to impact all the services that are brought to the city, not someone rebuilding their home. So is, I don't know, I'm trying to understand what this study's going to give us. What's, at the end of the day, what does this give us?
Well, it depends on your direction. That's why I've said that task order is negotiable. I think one of the things is, it has been six years since that snap- I think one of the things is it has been six years since that snapshot was taken. It's probably time to take another snapshot to make sure that your fees are legitimate in terms of the statute. And the statute requires contemporaneous information. So you need it sometime another, you know, to take a look at the research, the reports that are done and make sure that they're accurate.
Adding the Cambria, adding the Beach Maker, which is on, it's not here yet, but it's, construction's going to start anytime. Adding the two condos on Hundred and Fifty.
Everything that's been permitted since that snapshot was taken in twenty nineteen, which is considerable, the Cambria alone is considerable.
And by statute, you have to do it every ten years? But this is, this will be six years?
The statute is not requiring a specific time. It just says that it needs to be contemporaneous. You need to keep it updated.
Keep it updated.
You have to update your comprehensive plan every seven years. And that's a pretty broad type of information. And your comprehensive plan, I don't think yours due until, what, twenty twenty-seven?
I was like twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah. So you've got a ways on that. But one of the things that you would be looking at in that updated comprehensive plan would be the snapshot.
So whether we approve this this year or we kick it down the road a year or two, it's something that.
That's, that's a policy decision for the board.
Policy decision, but it's something that needs to be done.
It will, it will need to be done at some point. I mean, you could do it every year. That's probably not effective, given the yearly cycle of what we have to deal with or what you have to deal with in Madeira Beach. But it certainly should be taken a look at.
Enough has changed in the, in the city that.
I would suggest that enough has changed in the city in the last six years that it would be worthwhile taking a look at it.
Right.
And we can look at other questions, like the question of whether we can elevate and find a way that that can be waived or however you want to look at it. So the person doesn't have to pay a fee. Is that something that can be done legally? I don't know. I'd have to research that. I would say it's a question of first impression.
And you, this would also give you an opportunity to, all the, all the, all this data that's in the green and to review all that and truly get an idea of what the expenses are.
Some of those assets may be gone. They may have been replaced at a higher cost. And there may be new assets that aren't included. And then the basis in terms of what's going on in square footage islandwide of new permits, you know, that's not included either. So all of that would be updated.
All right. I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
So just to clarify for me.
Yes, sir.
The benefits of this report would not just be to find out if we could not charge as much of an impact fee for elevated houses. There are other benefits that ultimately we should probably do on a regular basis anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And anything else you might want us to investigate under that impact fee?
We could customize it. Well, we could give you a direction.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Got it, thank you.
And actually be giving staff direction. And then they would revise the task order and we would execute it.
Got it.
Commissioners, comments?
A question. As far as other local cities, could we compare all the impact fees and see where we are in relative to, you know, a variety of local cities and the county?
Yeah, depending to what extent you would want to do that, there's a lot of cities in Pinellas County and the county itself.
Maybe three or four, Pinellas County being one of them.
Yeah. The goal, I think, would be to keep the task order within the thirty thousand dollar limit. I think that's the desire of the city.
I was hoping it wouldn't cost us any money.
I wouldn't expect much from that report.
Commissioner, comments?
So I more have a question for Jenny. We all know that I, I like the impact fees. I don't want them to go away. I believe, and I believe based off conversations with staff, that any home that increases its square footage of livable space has an impact on the community. So that's what I think. And I supported heavily the reduction of our permit fees from two percent to one percent. And you could go back and look at those meetings. I was strongly in favor of keeping the impact fees because of my belief that it impacts the entire community when you increase your square footage and where those dollars can be used. But as far as spending thirty thousand dollars, because this is more focused on the impact fee because that was the conversation. So my question would be more to you, Jenny. If this, if, and it seems like the commission is inclined or is leaning inclined to do some sort of study. We are not in a professional position to know what that study would be. And I would rather see us have you come back to us with what staff thinks. Because staff doesn't recommend this. Staff recommends that we move forward and keep with the impact fees as we're doing it. So if we were going to do an additional study, what kind of study would staff recommend? And could we, I'd like to see that, understanding that it may still be thirty thousand dollars. But thirty thousand dollars is a substantial amount of money to be spending on a study that we don't need, that may benefit us. But what is that going to be? What kind of study is it going to be? What would it benefit us? And how would staff present that or think that we, what we would need to do? Would be my, that's my thought process on that.
And then that would go to a B O C workshop, I'm guessing.
I'd be, I mean, instead of sitting here tonight and approving thirty thousand dollars and not understanding what we're approving it for. I mean, unless somebody's going to make a motion to do this study on impact fees, that would be the motion. I would not be for that motion because I'm not for doing away with impact fees. And neither is staff because that's the recommendation. But I would be interested if there are other options and other things to have a workshop and see what is that, that, and you all could help us understand what we would be voting on and what we would be getting out of it. And if impact fees were still a part of that study to make sure that we're in line with, just like when we got them to begin with, then that, that's part of it. I would not be opposed to that. But I, I'm not for just doing a study to get rid of impact fees. My opinion.
Mayor, I agree with you. There are a lot of cities out there and county, and they've done impact fee studies. We can adopt, we can look at them and analyze them and adopt them.
Well, we did that when we got this. So we got, they did a whole study on doing impact fees, which is why we charge them. So I just think that if we were going to move away from that and try to do other things, what is it that we're going to do? What is it? And this isn't the place that we get that information. This isn't where we discuss things like that, but.
It's my recollection that we would be, that we were one of the first cities, if not the only city on the beaches, that was going to charge an impact fee because we were totally built out. That was my recollection when we were back in the, in the planning commission.
And I can't speak to where it is today, but you had several that did have impact fees, but it wasn't islandwide. Not all cities had it.
Yeah. Something we need to do anyway. And the expert, Mr. Murphy, he's suggesting it's time. Just, just based on the growth or the changes that have been made in Madeira Beach.
I have no problems with another workshop to flesh the task out, task order out in a way that's more becoming to the commission. Again, this was just a draft. And I think it moved along more quickly than maybe it should have, you know? No rush. And again, that July or June of twenty twenty-six date, you know, that's just a, it's a window. We will work earnestly to get it done as quickly as possible.
I get it. I've just, I have neighbors that are going to have double mortgages, two mortgages. And anything we can do to help them get in their homes, I hate to see an extra five thousand dollars hit just because we want to build out a park. I mean, that's, that's my, more than one resident has brought that. You know, it's, it's pennies overall in their entire project. But, you know, they remind me, I have a second mortgage going in to lift my home.
I understand.
So it's the, it's, you know, it's kind of like piling on. And, and it's the few that are paying for what the many, everyone gets to enjoy. So I, I, I'm.
I might take issue with that, Commissioner Kerr.
Okay.
You know, the assets that you have that were used as the basis for calculating the fee are assets that the taxpayers have paid for over, since the town was incorporated, the city was incorporated. And as new people come in and expand the footprint of their buildings, it does have a greater impact. That's demonstrable over time. It may not be the individual homeowner at that time. But as those properties turn over over time, larger things can occur and those impacts are there. And there are even impacts with just the enlargement itself. The trucks coming back and forth, you know, those are impacts on your roads. So what the impact fee is designed to do is to capture the proportionate share of that impact on the whole of the community to make sure that as new things come in and things get bigger, you continue to maintain the level of service with your cultural and recreational facilities, with your transportation and mobility, and with your public safety.
We just don't see eye to eye in that, you know? And we never will, but that's, but that's okay.
I come to that conclusion.
That's okay. I mean, impacts are when you have to add a new school. We don't, or add a new hospital or we not, we, you have to. We're a built out community. So it's not like we're, we're taking a, a field and building a new development, a new community. We're not doing that. We never could. We just don't have the space. So if you're going to, if you're going to go, if you're going to go up and build a condo, that's an impact. I get that. You're going to, you know, take that same space and you're going to put a hundred beds versus ten, that's an impact. But. A residential home? No, it's not. But regardless, we're getting off topic. The, as far as the study, I'd be okay with kicking it down the road to another workshop to see if now's the time to do that. That'd be fine, but.
Maybe we could add it to our next workshop or the.
That'd be fine.
Would that be, our next workshop would be in two weeks. Would that be enough time to be able to put together a presentation? Or should we move it to the next workshop after that?
I would prefer the July.
Okay.
I will personally be out on a conference the next B O C workshop.
Okay.
We will have Andrew here.
Okay.
But I would prefer it to be July.
Would everyone be okay with moving this to July and being able to have a presentation on it?
Yeah, the further we could get down the road. I mean, people are just now starting to get financing and get, you see signs everywhere. Yeah, we're elevating our homes. And I'm sure you're going to start, you're going to start getting applications in for permits here pretty soon.
You can come back with more examples, real life examples of what those numbers are and show that to you as well.
What I kind of would like to really understand is if we're going to spend thirty thousand dollars on a study, what would staff recommend the study? You know, the, for us to understand what we're spending the money on, what more is it going to study on than just impact fees? What are we going to, what are we getting for our money? You know, you're going to spend thirty thousand dollars to quit collecting money. I want more than that. And if the study comes back and says that we shouldn't collect the money, that's a whole nother conversation, although I don't personally believe it will. But I could be wrong. I might have been wrong once or twelve times. But if, you know, so if we had a better understanding, especially right now when, I mean, we're looking at the loss of revenue in the community and you're talking about spending thirty thousand dollars, what are we going to get for that? What can we get for that more than just? I don't know what that is. So when I say that, I'm like pie in the sky. I have no idea. And it would address Commissioner or Vice Mayor Kerr's concerns. And at the same time, would give us all a deeper understanding of what the study would be. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. And I think we can have a conversation with staff and flesh out some options that you can kind of pick from at your workshop. And I've, I've made that workshop date in July. I've locked that under my calendar so I can be available. I think the, the Pinellas Interlocal for impact fees is also a discussion item for that.
Okay, that would be great.
Can I, can I make one last request?
Absolutely.
That we schedule you early in the meeting because I'm sure.
Yeah. We'll put him first on the agenda.
I have to object to that. No, you guys have always been very considerate in that regard. But I think when you have public here that are here to hear about a controversial case, apparently, you know, they deserve to get the priority there.
Oh, we apologize. Should have had you earlier.
Quite all right.
So we're all okay with moving this down to July for a workshop? For better conversation?
July workshop works great.
Come back with a presentation as well.
Thank you.
And work with Jerry.
It'll be a six week presentation instead of a two week. So watch out, it better be good.
Right. We have high expectations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is New Business Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, Amendment to the Emergency Operations Plan.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and read their resolution by title only. This is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Providing for the Adoption of the City of Madeira Beach Emergency Operations Plan dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Providing for an Effective Date. There's a reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five by title only.
Do we have any public comment? Commission? Questions? Comments?
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a Resolution twenty twenty-five oh five.
Do we have a city clerk? Would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tagliarini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six, F Y twenty twenty-five Budget Amendment Number One.
I'll go ahead and read that resolution by title only. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six. A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Amending the Budget for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five, By Increasing Appropriations for Expenditures in the General Fund, the Archibald Park Fund, and the Sanitation Fund, and Providing for an Effective Date. Again, that was reading Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six by title only. And I think Mr. Loughlin wants to make a presentation on this particular agenda item.
So briefly, we've gone through this in the workshop. Mainly, this is due to disaster related expenses that were not contemplated in the budgeting process last summer. So that's what the majority of these represent. So I know we've discussed these and you went through some of them item by item. So at this point, I'll address any questions if you have them. Otherwise, staff recommends approval.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioners? Questions, comments?
I feel pretty informed about this at this point.
I have a question. I believe at the workshop, I asked about the I T Services, page five thirty-nine. Increase seventy-five thousand. And offset by the fund balance carryover was used for that. And I got some, I have some additional information. So are we being charged additional money on our I T Services per year? I think the annual contract, how much is the annual contract, do you know?
I can look that up.
Yeah, we have. The budget, I think, was fifteen thousand a month is what's kind of coming to mind. But Andrew can confirm.
Yeah, I think there was a request for our outsourced I T provider to serve in the role of virtual chief information security officer. That didn't get in the budget. And so that is a service that they're, an outsourced service they're providing. And so that's the bulk of the request for the increase in those I T Services.
So the, but the I T Services are a hundred and ninety-four thousand annually? And... So, do the math, how much is that a month, I guess? Did we modify that to?
No.
Well, most of that is to comply with statute, the change regarding security and securing all your information technology, all the software that we use. So, the recommendation was, as Andrew said, this virtual kind of certified information security office-type work that, official that's essentially working to ensure all of our security. Which includes training for staff and others so that everybody that has access to any part of our network or any technology-related equipment.
But in 2024, did we increase that another five thousand dollars a month? In 2020, what I'm reading here, in 2023, we agreed on the sixteen one, sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars a month, but what I'm looking at here and delivery date, September 16th, 2024, we added a monthly five thousand dollars?
Correct, for the security component.
And that was a requirement of the state?
We were requi- yeah, and I don't have the exact, but we were required to, by a certain date, to enact a security component to all of our networks, everything that we do, technology-based.
Just, just asking. So, that, is that why we have this seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's the additional six, I mean, five thousand per month.
So, now we're paying twenty-one thousand dollars a month, basically, just over twenty-one thousand dollars a month for IT services.
But it was a requirement of the state.
Is that long-term, though, or we, I mean, is that a long-term thing, or would we bid that back out, or?
No, I think, we'll, we'll get more into it because there was a require, there was a requirement by 2025, but I'm not exactly sure, not recollecting whether it is in perpetuity. I don't think it is. You just have to have training enacted, but we'll have, we'll review with our IT and look for our budget for next year, whether it is needed or not.
So, I think I'll ask this for Vice Mayor Kerr. Could we have that answer at our next?
Please.
Yes, please?
Please.
To understand.
Right, I mean, if this, if this service was bid out or whatever in 2023 and it was approved-
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't, I guess I just don't understand what we're getting for our money, that's all. So, if, kind of help, help me there, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion? To approve?
Adopt.
Or, yeah, for the resolution to the amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-06-FY 2025 Budget Amendment Number One.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavaghi?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is approval of submission of RFP number 25-10, Financial Auditing Services.
Okay, so that's me. So, Section 218 dot three nine one, Florida statutes, governs the selection process of the external auditing firm for counties, municipalities, and special districts. We went through this process in 2020 and had an audit firm that provided audit services for fiscal year 2020 to 2024. That was a three-year agreement with two one-year renewal options, so that has since expired. Under state statute, there's no piggybacking allowance, there's no unlimited extension period. So, once that contract was exhausted, we need to go out for RFP to be aligned with, with state statute. So, in the, when we went through this process previously and in, in adopting the, the Florida law under 218 dot three nine one, it was determined that the Board of Commissioners would serve as the Auditor Selection Committee. The rules required by the state is we cannot have an employee of the city be part of that selection committee. Historically, they could. Oftentimes, the finance director and the finance team led that evaluation process and ultimate recommendation, so... So, when that, that law came about, we can have members of the public, or we can have, I think, at least, I'd have to see if it's one or more members of the governing body be a part of that auditor selection committee. So, it was determined in the previous, when we went through this previous selection process five years ago, that the Board of Commissioners would also serve as the auditor selection committee. So, this is the first step in the process. We've identif- that, that selection committee's already been identified from the previous solicitation. And now, and now we're going through another solicitation. This is the RFP to issue, and the way the process will work is we'll issue the RFP, we'll get out the door tomorrow, if you all approve this tonight, and then we'll have responses back. I believe that the deadline, per the RFP document, is July 16. And then the auditor selection committee would go, would, would then put that in a, in a workshop for the auditor selection committee, i.e. you all, for a meeting date in August, and then ultimately, the, in a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, you would make the, the votes to move forward with the firm. So, this is the first step in that process. I did note, and I just put a tentative date of August 20. On August 27th, you do have a budget workshop, and then you do have a workshop. So, if you have meeting fatigue and want to do this on a separate date, we can do August 20. That was listed as a tentative date, but if you'd rather put all this in, in, in one day, since you're already here, we can do that on the 27th, so we can have the budget workshop, then the auditor selection committee can meet maybe at 5:30, and then at 6 o'clock can be the regular workshop, if you all want to try to move all those meetings together. I can make, I can make that change to the tentative date to be August 27th instead of 20th. And so, what you'll get in your workshop materials, the RFP itself, which you already have, and then all of the proposals from the, the responding firms. The grading criteria is already established in the RFP document, so that's why I'm sending, providing this to you all here. If you're in agreement with it, I've, I've done consulting work for other municipalities, recommended a similar or same structure in how we evaluate and what those criteria are and how we're gonna grade it. So, if you're comfortable with what I've laid out here, then all you have to do in this, in this meeting is, is simply make a motion to approve issuing this RFP, and then the next step would be sending you these, the proposals for your deliberation on that August 27th meeting.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioners? Questions? Comments?
I personally would like to have it all in one day, but regardless, would we be able to get these in advance to be able, in our, in our box, to be able to review so that when we show up for the meeting, we actually, under, you know, we're not reading it for the first time?
So, the due date's July 16th. I didn't want to try to push it to July 23rd. I thought that was maybe a little rushed, and I wanted to give the response at least a good month or so. So, once that due dates and I have the proposals, I can, I can, I can send to you all, so you'll have a month to, to marinate on it.
Yeah, no, give, I'm gonna give it a chance to, for review, yeah.
Commissioners? Comments? Good. So, do we have a motion?
I move that we authorize staff to issue RFP number 25-10 for Financial Auditing Services and direct staff to schedule a meeting with the Auditor Selection Committee to perform an evaluation of respondents who submitted qualifying proposals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavaghi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is agenda setting for the June 25th regular workshop. City manager?
So, the items listed in, on the agenda, compensation study, that was a study performed by the gearing group. Resolution for adopting the ceremonial items policy, interlocal agreement between the county for the multimodal impact or transportation fee. Community development to review nonconformance and variances. We'll have updates for the Johns Pass dredging, the beach groins, post-storm work, and fiscal '25 financial update, including our storm damage and expenses related.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioners? Comments? Comments?
I have nothing there.
The only thing that I'd like to add is, on the post-storm updates for the, the city and where we're at, can we get a, more of a, like, departmental head update? So, like, Recreation, give us an update on where they are with all of their damages and costs and comebacks and, you know, are they back up and running a hundred percent? And Public Works and Fire and every department to give us, because we haven't really had that, haven't really gotten a good update to be able to understand where each department's at.
Can we include permitting, how they're doing?
Yes. I think every department would be wonderful.
Great idea.
Are we all good with that?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is-
We mentioned something else during our meeting that we wanted to put on the workshop.
Not this one, the next one.
The next one.
Yep.
Was there anything else? No, I guess not.
You think of it, just email Robin.
I included the impact fees for July 11th.
July, yeah.
Okay.
I, not July 11th, but July the 23rd, excuse me.
So, then next on the agenda is reports and correspondence, Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule for 2025.
Any proposed changes, discussion?
Nope.
I didn't see any changes.
No.
Then, Board of Commissioners' meeting report, January 1, 2025 through May 31st, 2025? That, is that you, Clara?
I've updated it through May 31st. And if you have anything that you would like me to add to the monthly report, of course, at the end it'd be an annual, and we're adding it to Laserfish. I've got most all the city manager ones in there except for July. And then, um, like I had mentioned earlier, I would like to put, like, the meetings with the public and all that that the mayor does. I think it's wonderful, because this is what we're doing, is, is a Board of Commissioners' report. So, if there's anything you would like added, I'm more than happy to do that.
This is very thorough.
It is very good. Thank you, Clara.
You're very welcome.
Next on the agenda is Board of Commissioners' correspondence. I'm not sure what that is intended to be.
That was your first thing, when you used to have it, like, if you had a meeting and you wanted to report on it, or something that the commission brought up at the end that they wanted to share?
Oh.
And I, I, like, covered it up with the calendar and the-
You were gonna add the big, big C on-
But, right.
Once a month.
Once a month. So, I will ask Robin to have the big C update on there once a month. And I, I do serve on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and that, I'm, I am going to, we just got a new liaison. She was going to come tonight and then did not get to come. And I was a, was... It's not recommended, recommended, for the EMS Advisory Council, which I'm very excited. The county commission is going to vote in the coming, their next meeting for me to begin attending that, and I'll have the first meeting on the 27th. So, I will also want to come back and bring information on that. If you don't know what the EMS council is, look it up. The fire department is excited that I will be there as a voice for them. I am super excited to be there. I was, when I shadowed one day over with the fire department, I happened to be there when the county's medical director was there, Dr. Jameis. And he, I don't, I believe if I'm correct in saying this, it's the first time he had ever been to our fire department. And he came and sat with the fire, with the, the fire department that day, and I got to participate. And they have a, one of the things that, that he was talking about that day that I am, I'm pretty excited to be able to learn more about and be involved in and a part of, I hope, is a fentanyl program into the county. And I lo- we lost our youngest son to a accidental fentanyl overdose. And so, I felt like that day when he came, it was just meant to be for me to be there and get to meet him, and now to have the opportunity to serve on that council, to represent not just our city, but many. I'm pretty excited to see how I can make a change and be a voice for, for us and what we do here and what our fire department does. So, I will look forward to bringing you updates on that. Um, next is city attorney?
I just want to bring your attention, I think I've sent everybody an email, that the fire station litigation settlement agreement has been signed by everyone. At this point, we're, um, the attorney handling the matter is attempting to get all the funds that were a, a part of that settlement agreement delivered to him and then ultimately to the city, and we're shooting for the end of the month. Hopefully, that will, will be successful in that, but we're very, very close to getting that case completely over.
Thank you. Next is city clerk's report, June 2025.
Yes, I had put in there, congratulations to Brandon Baring. He's from the Recreation Department. He's been assisting the city clerk's office since October, September, October last year, October, I think. He's been doing an exceptional job, and so, um, he, to me, he's a bright young man, and we're proud to have him, and he's glad to be on board with us. And I know in the EOC, they wanted some staff, you know, there are some times, and so, and I think I'm gonna use him to do that, and I know he'd do a good job. He has a bachelor's in journalism, and he loves that kind of stuff. And so, I think he's a great asset, along with Laura Hooly, a great asset to the clerk's office, and Laura recently obtained her professional certification in administrative assistant, the executive administrative assistant. So, I'm proud of both of them.
Nice.
Yes.
That's awesome. Thank you. For him getting promoted, so a, a nice thing to think about is through all terrible things come great things, right? And so, because of the hurricanes, he went to working with Clara's department and got promoted. So, he went from childcare to in a, in a job that has, that he found he really liked, might not, would have ever known, along with a couple of other recreation employees who, because recreation wasn't working, they came in and worked in other departments, and now they're working in planning. And, yeah, right, to be able to, they, they may have never realized that would be a path for them, so that's a bright spot that Helane and Milton gave us. Yep. Thank you, Clara. Next on the agenda is the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The, just wanted to thank all who participated, attended our Hurricane and Turtle Expo. Did want to comment, we will make it a, separate them out for next year. They've grown a little bit too big individually, so they will be too separate for next year to focus on each separately, the appropriate times of the year. We are in sea turtle nesting season, which started May 1st, and of course, we're in the storm time of the year again, and we've been doing all sorts of different activities to keep- to keep them away, but we are ready. We've had several staff, in addition to finalizing our emergency operations plan, several meetings regarding software, regarding, well, software mainly related to floodplain management, permitting management, it's substantial damage, et cetera, but also looking at staffing equipment and getting all the departments prepared and ready. We hopefully found a location, it appears to store equipment. We are on, still in search of a alternate location for our emergency operations center, should we need to evacuate, as we did for Hurricane Milton. Just want to remind and invite anybody who listens to the, this recording, we will be hosting a groundbreaking ceremony Friday, June the 20th, for our Military Court of Honor. That'll be at essentially what we call Patriot Park, which is adjacent to the 9/11 memorial. That'll take place at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, June the 20th, the following Friday, June the 27th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. We will also be hosting a groundbreaking for fire station that Madeira Beach Fire will be managing staffing, which will be located in, in North Reddington, but that'll be near, adjacent to the North Reddington Beach City Hall, or Town Hall building, excuse me. Those are the two events for over the next couple of weeks. I will be bringing back, I hadn't required staff to put together a complete during post-storm and getting, but now that we're close to, back as normal, to have a full monthly update on citywide activities, which is what, what we call the city manager's report, and we'll have that at the next, for July, at the July 11th, July 9th, excuse me, next regular meeting, and we'll have those every month thereafter, that will incorporate what's happening citywide. We obviously spent the first several months post-storm getting the city back together. We still are post-storm type work, but it has lessened as we have advanced throughout the last few months, so we're getting back to pre-storm as best as we, as best as we possibly can. And lastly, I do want to thank, again, the commission for your continued support of staff. It's been a pretty interesting last eight months, and, but we're here, we have a tremendous staff, they do great work every day, and definitely appreciate your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had no public comment to respond to, so if there's no objection, we're adjourned. Oh, it is 10:40.